Good evening and welcome to the June 26, 2018 San Bruno City Council. And we will first want to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for providing the floor arrangement for this evening. Thank you Vice Mayor. And if we could have roll call please.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. And if I could ask Chair Hamilton to lead us in the pledge.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under announcements, we are going to receive a presentation from the Fire Chief and Police Chief regarding the city's requirements for use of safe and sane fireworks and the zero tolerance policy. Chiefs?
Good evening Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. The San Bruno Police and Fire Departments are keenly aware of the heightened sensitivity and awareness to fireworks due to safe and sane fireworks being legal in the city of San Bruno. And officers from the San Bruno Police Department will be strictly enforcing the prohibited use of illegal dangerous fireworks and the improper use of safe and sane fireworks in the days prior to and during the Fourth of July holiday. Police staffing levels have been increased to accommodate enforcement efforts. All days off have been canceled. And I'd like to acknowledge and thank all staff for the sacrifice they make every year to spend this holiday away from their families, even if it is their scheduled day off. Officers will be deployed in marked and unmarked vehicles, on bicycles, and on foot. We will be doing everything legally available to us, we will be using every legal means to enforce fireworks throughout the holiday. Safe and sane fireworks can be used from June 28th through July 3rd between the hours of 12:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and from noon until 11:00 PM on the Fourth of July holiday. Safe and sane fireworks are only allowed on private property, and when used should be a minimum of 10 feet from any structure or combustible material. Safe and sane fireworks are not allowed on any public street, park, school, parking lot, or any vacant area open to the public. The City Council has authorized the issuance of fines for violations of firework regulations. And individuals who violate this law regarding both safe and sane fireworks, or who are caught with dangerous or illegal fireworks, are subject to arrest and/or a fine of $1,000. The Police Department this year will have non-uniformed personnel as well deployed in the field looking for violations. While an individual may not be caught in the act by a uniformed officer, he or she may be cited after the fact if they had been observed committing a violation by a non-uniformed officer who subsequently directs uniformed personnel into to issue the citation. This may even include receiving a citation on the dates following the Fourth of July if officers were unable to issue the citation on the Fourth. Video will be used when possible to document these violations to assist with post-citation hearings after the fact. This strategy will also be employed to enforce Municipal Code Section 6.51.030 that applies to anyone that allows, causes, maintains, or permits a violation to exist or continue by any act or omission. For example, if you're inviting folks over for any type of Fourth of July celebration and you are allowing the use of illegal fireworks on your property, you would be subject to the $1,000 fine pursuant to this code section. Over the next few days, officers will be contacting residents in areas where the use of illegal fireworks have been frequently used in past years, to review with residents the existing statutes and to alert them of our dedicated enforcement efforts. We've identified approximately 15 locations where we'll be making contact with folks this year prior to the, in leading up to the holiday. Public notices have also been distributed via San Bruno Cable, the Police Department's social media outlets. A mailer has been issued to all residents and that mailer has also been posted on the San Bruno webpage. I would now like to turn it over to Fire Chief Cresta to give you an update on the Fire Department's plans.
Thanks Chief Mayor, Council Members. Good evening. I'm here to provide you an update on what's been done and ongoing as far as the Fire Department perspective for the holiday. On June 7th, Fire Marshal Jason Williams along with Lieutenant Johansson from the Police Department conducted a firework safety seminar for the two firework vendors and the representatives from the 16 permitted groups operating fire booths. The groups were provided safety literature and posters for the booths. Staff has distributed, or is in the process of distributing about 300 of these warning flyers throughout all our public-private schools in the community. This is the flyer here, warning about the use of illegal fireworks and the potential fines. This year additionally, we've also reached out to all our shopping malls in the San Mateo Avenue corridor to post the warning signs in windows where permitted from stores. As the chief said, cable TV is running the PSAs through July, or through June and into July. On the 28th will be, all the booths will be inspected by the Fire Marshal and there'll be subsequent inspections daily after that initial inspection leading up to the Fourth. We will be upstaffed on the Fourth, including myself, the Fire Marshal, and we're also staffing an extra engine. The extra engine is there to respond to firework-related or fire calls to keep available other resources available for the other calls, emergencies, medical emergencies, and the other stuff that happens along the way. We'll be coordinating with PD that night as well. We'll attend the cooperative briefing and our people will be in contact. Illegal fireworks that are confiscated by the Police Department or turned in through other means will be collected, weighed, and transported to our magazine, reported to the state, and delivered to the county Sheriff's Office for disposal. Just some reminders regarding safety of use of safe and sane fireworks. Residents will be provided with a safety brochure when they purchase those fireworks and they should review those. You should have a hose nearby. In the past, and we've gotten pretty good at this, but we don't want to discard those fireworks immediately into your towder because that could cause a fire, so it's great to have a bucket full of water to dispose those in. And just remember to be careful, try to keep the streets open for emergency vehicles, and be safe. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions for the two of us?
Any questions of the chiefs from council? Barney?
Just a clarification on when reporting fireworks, is it preferable to call 911 or is it preferable to call dispatch?
The phone call will go to the same dispatcher working at the Police Department. However, we usually reserve 911s for emergency calls, so the best number to use would be 616-7100 if you're calling in a non-emergency call as you would for any other non-emergency call.
Got it. There was some chatter on next door about when you should call 911 and when you should call the dispatcher, but call the dispatch, not 616-7100, just to report it, but if it's a real emergency then you dial 911, right?
Yeah, 365 days a year. If it's a real emergency, call 911.
Got it.
If there's nobody in any type of jeopardy, please don't call 911 because you're just, it just overflows the 911 system. All those calls come in, but those do take priority over business line calls.
Got it. And then my last question is, so if a resident out there right now is aware of a recurring problem of a neighbor or somebody across the street or down the street, who should that resident call to try to get the police to go by and advise that house that there's some stiff penalties for lighting off fireworks?
The contact we make with individuals regarding violations are based on prior experience and history that we've had with residents. We don't advocate that residents call for neighbors to have the police knock on their door because we won't do that because that, as you can understand, can be abused. So if there is somebody breaking the law and you're reporting that, please do that. But if you call us ahead of time to go knock on somebody's door anticipating that they're going to do something wrong, we don't do that. That's not a practice of ours.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Laura?
Just a comment. Over the last several years, I've had an opportunity on two different occasions on Fourth of July to drive from Kaiser Edward City to San Bruno. And I'm amazed by the amount of illegal fireworks in other cities, other cities that don't sell safe and sane fireworks. So I know it's a big deal and I know it's a big issue in every city. I just want to commend the Fire Department as well as the Police Department because every year it just gets better in terms of the communication, the enforcement of tracking down illegals. It's a tough thing and I get it. And I think all residents like myself who live in San Bruno are concerned. I wasn't happy about being woken up at 4:00 AM last week about the fireworks that went on for probably five to 10 long minutes. It's not fun. And I have dogs. I have a dog that'll spend the entire night in a shower as she's found her safest place because of the four walls of protector. So we get it. So I think just continue doing what we're doing and I think it's a positive experience for kids to grow up with safe and sane fireworks. It's illegals we just have to track down and knock out. So keep it up and I appreciate the both presentations.
Any other questions or comments? And then also should have received, I know I received mine in the mail, which was the mailer that also the city sent out to every person in this community to remind them of this as well. So that is our effort and campaign in order to try to educate, alert, and remind folks of what is right, what is wrong, what is legal, and what is not. Thank you to both chiefs. Let's move on to presentation. I'm going to present a proclamation to the San Bruno Library for encouraging all residents of all ages to participate in the 2018 Summer Reading Program. And we have a proclamation and that are, I'm just going to read the bottom portion, "The San Bruno Public Library is offering over 90 programs this summer to entertain, inspire, and educate the library patrons. And now therefore I recommend, Dean, a mayor of the city of San Bruno, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby encourage residents of all ages to visit the public library and participate in the annual Summer Reading Program." And if I could ask Irene to present this to Tim, our superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you Father Stuckey. Thank you very much.
Please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much for this proclamation. I'd like to also thank the City Council for its continued support of the Summer Reading Program and the library itself. The library's Summer Reading Program serves two purposes. The first is to introduce San Bruno's youngest children to the wonders of reading. By working with kids ages zero to five and their caregivers, the library is developing children who will enter kindergarten ready to read. The second purpose is to stop the summer slide. Multiple studies have shown that children who do not read over the summer lose about two months of literacy skills. This summer slide accumulates year over year and is a major contributor to school readiness gaps of children entering high school. The good news is that the library is putting a stop to the summer slide by reaching more people every year. In 2008, there were 856 Summer Reading participants. Last year, there were 2,230. We've already signed up well over 1,000 San Bruno residents for this year's program and are well on our way to once again topping 2,000. This year, we're making signing up for Summer Reading easier than ever by offering the ability to sign up online. If you sign up online, you can track your reading and receive reading suggestions. Go to summerlearners.org or our website, sanbrunolibrary.org for more information. Also this year, we're holding multiple Summer Reading events at the library every week, culminating in a Hands-on Science Fair and Ice Cream Social on Wednesday, July 25th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. I've placed flyers in the back for anyone interested in our events, or you can visit sanbrunolibrary.org. I encourage all San Bruno residents to participate in Summer Reading. I think you'll discover our program is not only educational, but a lot of fun too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Move on to consent.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Before I open it up, there is a announcement I need to make. State law requires us to orally report that the City Council is considering approving a contract with our new city manager, Javon Garvin. His starting salary will be $263,500 and will be subject to the terms, conditions, and additional benefits described in the contract attached to the agenda, which is item F on the consent. Now it's opened up to council regarding action on consent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I apologize for the interruption. I think you may have inadvertently misspoke. It's 236,500, not 263.
What did I say? I reversed numbers.
Just so the record.
But I'm glad you caught that. But that's what, hey, if you read the staff report, it's right. Don't listen to me. No. So let's re-say that, just so we're all on the same page. His starting salary will be $236,500 for the record. Now, well, thank you, City Attorney. Any action from council on consent?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes carry. Motion passed.
Hold public hearing and adopt resolutions approving 2018-19 operating and 2018 through '23 capital improvement program budget and approving city appropriations GAN limit for 2018-19.
City Manager Jackson. And team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. And maybe I'll just start where you left off with team. I'd like to first highlight and recognize the fact that this budget doesn't come together overnight and it doesn't come together without the deliberate and collaborative work effort by many people in our organization. All of our departments contributed a great deal of time and effort to their individual presentations, both written into the proposed budget as well as delivered orally to you at our three budget study sessions. The two ladies seated to my right are our A Team with our Finance Department, working under the able guidance of interim Finance Director Jim O'Leary, who could not be here tonight, Darlene Wong, and Esther Garbys Fernandez. I only minorly massacred her name. Again, this is a opportunity for us to think not only about the financial proposals that we're making to the City Council to support programs and services, but to detail and articulate the work program that is proposed to be pursued over the next 12 months. Again, the budget is not only a plan for resource allocations to support daily operations and capital projects delivered through the city, but it is an articulation of the vision of where San Bruno is going and how is it going to get there. We do this every year and we appreciate the time and attention that the City Council devotes not only to reviewing what is a weighty document, but your time and your participation in the various study sessions and other meetings that go into the development of this work program and the financial resource proposals. One of the first things that we do when we prepare the budget is to look backwards a little bit and to highlight for the purposes of the City Council's understanding as well as that of the public, to some of the more major significant accomplishments of the prior year that last year's budget represented in the work program and that were accomplished. I won't read all of these, but I'll highlight a couple of them. You can see them on the slide behind me. This year represents one step closer to full and final completion of what has been a massive undertaking to rebuild the Crestmore neighborhood, not only to restore and repair the damaged areas of that neighborhood, but also to build what is essentially, from an infrastructure standpoint, an entirely new, state-of-the-art neighborhood that will be an example of what new infrastructure can do and a shining demonstration of this community's resilience and its recovery from disaster that occurred in 2010. Secondly, you'll hear tonight, so I won't go into great detail right now, but the opportunity to begin the very exciting process of planning for our new recreation center and aquatic center with the completion of the conceptual design that you will hear about tonight. And then lastly, for my comments on this topic, we've seen major progress over this past year with much more to come in building out our transit corridor vision for the future. We have projects now coming out of the ground and as the council knows, this is a long and sometimes complicated process, but we have tangible demonstration of what the future is beginning to shape up in terms of its physical presence in our downtown and commercial corridors of San Bruno. As we build the budget, it's also an opportunity to look carefully at not only the individual work program recommendations and proposals in the budget, but also to link those to the City Council's established overarching priorities for the city's work program on a multi-year basis. And while this information is probably familiar, it's because these objectives, having been previously established, continue to guide, direct, and to provide a framework for the city's work program delivered by all of our operating departments. Diving a little bit into the budget itself, we spend a fair amount of time on our general fund. The general fund is that portion of our budget funded primarily by taxes and a variety of other revenues that are detailed on this page. This is the portion of our budget that funds all of our public safety, our community service, our administrative operations that are the core of the service delivery through our operating departments. As you see in this chart, the revenues that are proposed to total $45,610,000 over the coming year are comprised of a relatively diverse number of sources, which is a good thing because that gives a little bit of cushion to economic or other downturns that may affect one or two revenue sources but don't have a broad across-board impact. You'll also see that the revenues have stayed relatively flat, although there are two categories that I would highlight that are showing some amount of growth. First of all, in departmental revenues, and I think that this area, although a relatively small-ish proportion of overall revenues, is one that we pay close attention to because it is one that we can manage and control in a more deliberate, direct way than some of the other resources that come to us through formulas that are developed by others. Every year, the City Council takes the time to review our master fee schedule and that's one of the key actions that assists us in making sure that our departmental revenues stay timely and that they are set at an amount that is reasonable to recover costs for individual delivery of service. In our taxes area, and again, I think as the council is aware, this $30 million is comprised of a variety of different individual revenue sources, including transient occupancy or hotel motel tax, sales tax, and property tax being the largest category. We're not seeing a great deal of growth in those categories during, that is projected for the coming year, but what we are seeing is a gradual uptick. We hope, and one of the key strategies behind the transit corridor plan is growth in property tax revenues, and we are seeing growth in that category. And we expect to continue to see that potentially at an increasing pace as development continues to be active within the community. On the expenditure side, you'll see again that in most areas, and we've presented on the next slide here, the general fund operating budget by category, by departmental category, you'll see that in many of our departmental operations, cost control initiatives that went into the development of the budget were successful in containing or even reducing costs at or below the levels of the prior year. In some cases where costs have increased, they are primarily due to the costs associated with our largest category of expenditures across all departments, which is employee costs. Overall, our budget is comprised at the level of 70%. Our operating budget is 70% comprised of costs associated with staff. Staff-delivered services is our product, so it's, we're a service organization, so that is not surprising. But as you can imagine, then increases to employee costs has a disproportionate effect than on the overall expenditure levels of the organization. What you see here however, and as the City Council is aware, the category of staff costs or employee costs has increased in the salary category by 3% over the prior year. And in the retirement benefits category, which is 30, which represents organization-wide an average of 33% of salaries, that category has increased by significantly more than 3% over the past year. But if you go to the last number in the total column, change in budget over the prior year, we are, our total budget is increased by only 3%. So I mentioned that while employee costs have increased by a bit more than 3%, overall our total operating expenses have increased by only 3%, which means that expenditure controls integrated into this budget have been effective in containing all costs, but in particular where we can cut on supplies and professional services and equipment, non-personnel categories, we have done that, I would say, with reasonable success. Just a little bit more on expenditure controls. This is an important part of how we put the budget together. And this slide reviews some of the most important techniques that we use, both in developing the budget as well as in our day-to-day expenditures of budgeted resources. In particular, we have strict policies that control the amount of expenditure authority that each level of staff in our organization has. The City Council approves expenditures over $25,000 and liability and workers' compensation claims over that same amount. We've spent a fair amount of time in previous budget discussions talking about one of the things that has given us a favorable budget balancing tool in prior years and again in this year, and I'll discuss that a little bit more in a moment, is salary savings from employee positions that are, that remain vacant. from employee positions that remain vacant for some period of time during the year. Now, while we are not currently in a situation of a mandated freeze of vacant positions, in other words, the budget is not being controlled by positions that are authorized but cannot be filled, a part of our daily operational program is to carefully evaluate any time we have an employee position vacancy, whether or not that position can be, whether those duties and responsibilities can be handled in a different way, even for a temporary or even for a permanent period of time. And there is always a period of time where the position remains vacant during recruitment. So we typically end every year with a surplus, if you will. At this time so far, 1718 budget, as you'll see in a moment, ends with a positive amount of revenues over expenditures, and that goes directly to these expenditure controls and in particular salary savings that result from prudent and strong management of positions and salaries. Summarizing the general fund, and this is a presentation I've alluded to a couple of times in the comments that I've just made. If you look at the 2017-18 estimated actual column in the middle of this slide, you see that both, that revenues have come in or are estimated by June 30th of this year to come in just above budgeted revenues for the current 2017-18 fiscal year. And you see that expenditures are estimated to be realized at an amount that is significantly less than the amounts that were budgeted. Again, touching back to the expenditure control mechanisms that we use and reflecting in large measure salary savings that have occurred over the prior year. What you see for the current year, in the 2018, or I'm sorry, in the coming year, in the 2018-19 proposed budget column, is that in fact expenditures are proposed at an amount that exceeds ongoing projected revenues in the total amount of expenditures over revenues of $1.3 million. That gap, if you will, is prudently balanced with a use of prior year ending fund balance as well as the, I'm sorry, is the beginning fund balance as well as a prudent use of general fund fund balance. I want to call your attention to another item on this chart, and that is the proposed transfer from the general fund reserve. We talked about this at the budget study sessions. This is $500,000 that we anticipated would be lost in sales tax revenues during the coming year due to the closure of a major business enterprise in our community. More recent information has suggested that we will not have that experience. In fact, that business has been purchased by another owner and is actually very quickly back up and in operation. So we've amended the resolution that you have in front of you tonight, and you will see that the $500,000 that we proposed to take out of the reserves to backfill the expected loss in sales tax, we believe is no longer necessary. So the budget that we're asking you to approve tonight will include restoration of $500,000 into proposed sales tax revenues and the elimination of this proposed transfer. I think that's good news. Moving to reserve funds, similarly, this slide has not yet been updated to reflect the restoration, if you will, of the proposed transfer. So where you see the general fund reserve of 25 percent of budget expenditures, the $11.592 million represents just slightly less than 25 percent because we were proposing to take $500,000 out of the reserve fund at 24.6 percent. Restoring that $500,000 will replenish us to the full 25 percent balance that is the existing and continuing city council policy. Just another word about the reserve funds. This is a policy that was adopted by the city council approximately seven or eight years ago now that has served this city extremely well and has provided the, has demonstrated your prudent financial management strategies, but it has also proved to provide exactly what reserve funds are intended to be available for, and that is a necessary use for unanticipated and otherwise emergency types of situations. We certainly are no stranger to emergencies in San Bruno, and the proposal to transfer revenues to backfill sales taxes is but one example of the kind of thing that can occur. So again, we're happy to report replenishment of that general fund reserve amount. I'll mention one other aspect of this slide, and that is the general fund capital reserve. As we've talked about at some length in the study sessions that occurred over the past two and a half weeks, this reserve, although it's called a reserve, it is intended to be used to provide necessary funding to make sure that capital projects that need to be completed are adequately funded. This reserve is experiencing a bit of a problem, and I call this to the city council's attention as something that probably doesn't need to be addressed in an urgent manner during the coming year, but will be a topic that the city council will need to focus on particularly in coming years as we continue to need to utilize general fund capital reserves for a variety of different kinds of important projects that don't have any other funding source other than the general fund, which is primarily our facility-related projects. But this amount, the $8 million as the ending balance, includes a $6 million amount that we recently received as a result of an additional penalty fine levied against PG&E by the California Public Utilities Commission. And that amount, as the capital budget indicates, has been designated by prior city council discussion to replace Fire Station Number 52. What you see by the end of our projections for the end of 2018-19 show that balance dipping a bit below $6 million, which means that we will need to watch that fund very carefully in order to be able both to fund Station 52 as well as deal with the variety of different facility-related needs that come up during the year that draw upon that capital reserve. So very quickly, I'm going to turn to the business-type operations of the city, and as the council is aware, we have a variety of what we call enterprise funds. These funds are fully funded by ratepayer or other designated revenues and are not funded by taxes in the manner that the general fund derives its resources. The water fund first, and as the city council is aware, we did a financing earlier this year that was intended to bring additional revenues into both our water and our wastewater fund at an early stage in order that we could complete capital projects. That financing, as well as ratepayer revenues, is generating total operating revenues this year of $15,742,000. Our operating expenditures are substantially less than that, and that is entirely per plan, leaving $6 million, almost $500,000 as revenue that will be put into the capital program in order to complete a variety of different important projects. We'll talk about the CIP in just a minute, but as the council is aware, we're continuing to pursue a very aggressive program to rebuild our water and our wastewater infrastructure, and that will continue to be a primary focus of the work program over the coming year. In the wastewater enterprise, the story is very similar. Ratepayer revenues, including the rate increases that were approved by the city council as a five-year program last year, will generate operating revenues along with the financing revenues to cover both operating expenditures as well as $9 million to be included in the capital budget to cover capital projects. Moving along to the cable enterprise fund, unfortunately, as the council is aware, we have a substantially different story in our cable enterprise. That enterprise is continuing to show a deficit that has accrued over a number of years during which capital expenditures, combined with operating expenditures, have exceeded available ratepayer revenues. That deficit is shown in our budget, even with prudent management operations and cost containment strategies that are applied both to our general fund and equally to our enterprise funds. That deficit will be increased by $130,000 in operations this year and by $1.1 million in capital and other expenses. Moving to the capital improvement program, this slide simply summarizes the project funding in the total amount for 2018-19, and I'll move to a little bit of a display of the projects that will be pursued this year at that level. You'll see that our water and wastewater enterprise projects are the lion's share of our capital work program as well as our capital expenditures. And we point out one other aspect on this slide. If you go to the total five-year program, and as the council is aware, we develop a one-year budget and work program and a five-year advance review of projects that are anticipated to be completed over that five-year planning period. You'll see that in the parks and facilities category, that is the single largest category of anticipated expenditures over the five-year program, that again, our facilities, infrastructure, if you will, is an area of significant concern in that our projects outpace our available general fund revenues, and many of these projects actually, many of the necessary projects actually are shown in our five-year CIP as unfunded. So continuing to focus on necessary improvements and potential replacements of our facility infrastructure remains a topic that will require attention over the next several years. The next two slides just give a little bit of perspective about the massive and very important number and type of projects that have been completed over the past year. So starting with study and design projects, you can see that in this area, both in our water and wastewater enterprises as well as elsewhere, with stormwater projects as well as street and other projects, we have completed really a truly amazing amount of capital and infrastructure repair and improvements, or planning for capital repair and improvements. Our next slide shows over the past year, we completed and delivered a number of extremely important capital projects, including the San Mateo Avenue Water and Sewer Replacement Project that was just very recently completed, pedestrian crosswalk improvements, replacement of our city park restrooms, replacement of the streetlight circuitry in our Mills Park subdivision, as well as improvements to this building, our beautiful new deck, and the work that was done to repair the box culvert that was damaged on Masson Avenue. So this adjusts, just to highlight that although it is something that we see around town, sometimes we don't give enough attention to the really truly impressive amount of work that is being done to situate our community physically and operationally into the long-term future. Continuing that work program for the coming year, we have a large number of construction and design projects that will be delivered. I will highlight just a couple of those. In the water enterprise, having completed a couple of years ago, having completed the tank on, what's it, tank number three up near Skyline Boulevard, we're turning our attention to completion of another of our storage tanks on Cunningham Drive. We will be doing a great deal of work in the areas east of El Camino, in the areas we call Avenues 1-1 and 1-2. I would refer you to our printed budget, which is also available online to get some perspective about exactly where that is. But we will be doing a complete replacement of both water and sewer mains throughout those neighborhoods. They are among the oldest in our community, and we are moving strategically through the city, starting with the oldest and moving to those areas where we have newer infrastructure or less old infrastructure that has historically caused fewer problems. As I mentioned before, the Recreation and Aquatic Center will move into the actual construction design phase. We look forward to beginning work on replacement of Station 52, and we are very proud to be anticipating full completion and delivery of two brand-new parks for our community during the coming year. One in the Crestmore neighborhood that will be completed late summer, early fall. One in the Crestmore Neighborhood that will be completed late summer, early fall, as part of the full and final completion of the infrastructure reconstruction in that neighborhood, and on Florida Avenue on the property that the city council purchased a number of years ago with the hope of designing and delivering a park. We will finally see that actually built and open for public use and enjoyment. As the last part of my presentation, and as we do every year, the budget is put together both with an eye towards continuation of all existing programs and services at their existing levels. That's what we call the base budget, and that's the information that I talked about, both in our enterprise funds, in our operating, both for our enterprise funds as well as for our general fund. Our operating budget includes all of the things that have been previously approved by the city council and expected by our residents at the existing levels of service. Each year, we also look to the future and identify unmet needs that really do need attention and propose to the city council certain, what we call, service enhancement proposals that would allow us to expand operations and services and/or perform them more effectively, more efficiently, with an additional limited allocation of resources. I won't go through these in detail. We've spent a fair amount of time on these at the budget study sessions, but call them out for your attention because when we present the budget to you, we're asking you to consider both the base budget, as well as the supplemental enhancements, and then again, also the capital improvement program. So, you're looking at three different bundles as part of the action to approve the budget. You'll see that the, on the previous slide, we've shown the ongoing service enhancements. The next slide shows one-time service enhancements. For the most part, we're proposing that prior-year fund balance be used to fund the ongoing costs and the one-time costs that will not recur. It can also be reasonably covered with use of the prior-year fund balance. All of this is detailed in more specific terms in the budget that you previously received. And again, for members of the public who might be interested, it is available on the city website. Summary of some of the significant points of the budget is provided in the city manager's letter, which is also provided on the website and in the bound copy. Before you, we've prepared a resolution tonight that would allow you to adopt the budget as proposed, and provided to you tonight with highlighted sections is the change that I mentioned earlier with the $500,000 no longer needing to be brought in from reserves, but showing as a increase to projected sales tax revenues. And we've made some clarification cleanup from the resolution that was originally in your packet to show actual dollar amounts, so that you can compare the budget document to the resolution and find the exact same numbers. The resolution that was included in your agenda packet rounded those numbers to the With that, I'm happy to take any city council questions, and we have department directors and finance staff available to take any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. This is also a public hearing, but before, does council have any immediate questions you want to ask staff before we open the public hearing? All right. If there's anybody, we have no speaker cards, so is there anybody here from the public who wanted to speak in regards to the budget or the CIP? If not, we go ahead and close the public hearing. You'll be precluded from speaking at it at a later time. So, last call for anybody on this topic. Action from council?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Back to council for discussion and our questions of staff. Anyone?
Through the chair.
Irene.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff, all staff. I know going through budgets and doing this while you're also doing your regular work is a monumental task, so I do thank you. I have just a couple of comments. Within the document itself, there's reference to the gas tax, and I know that some of these funds and some of the future funds will be coming from SB, from Senate Bill 1. I think it needs to be pulled separately so that the public can know that that money is new money and that that is where it's coming from. There'll be a referendum of that bill in the November ballot, and I'm hoping that people who understand what that money is going for will make an educated vote. So, I hope people understand it's only a 12 cent per gallon increase, and half of the money, approximately $1.5 billion, goes to local streets and roads, goes right back to the community, and I believe that that increases our ability to do streets by a million, roughly $1 million a year, which is a tremendous amount of money. So, I just hope we can do that in the final published document. The other thing I want to ask you about is on page 150, oh, no, wrong page, sorry. There's a reference, and I had it here, there's a reference to streetscaping for the city hall.
Can you tell me again which page?
Pardon me?
Which page?
That's the one I'm trying to remember. Hold on just a second. I had the other one noted. Here it is. Okay. So, on page, well, it's in capital improvements under parking facilities. It's the, they're not really numbered, 1, 2, 3, 4th page, and it says civic center facility improvements. It's project number 83885.
Page 378.
1, 2, 3. I'm sorry, it's the third piece of paper, and it's on the backside of that.
Right. That's page number 370.
Oh, mine is obscured by the hole punch, so, okay, thank you. Anyway, this has, it talks about doing the landscaping along Linden Avenue into a drought-tolerant demonstration garden, and I know we've talked about doing that for several years now, but I also noticed that there's not enough money left in that account to actually do the garden, so I'm wondering what happened.
So, I believe that this amount was intended for the design, and if it is council's pleasure, we would relook at that and bring that back to you as a budget amendment to allow for actual construction.
Okay, so...
Does that work?
It works for me. So, the planning is going to go forward, and then we'll be looking at what the plan actually tells us.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Okay. Everybody's pausing. Marty?
So, I've struggled with this budget. I understand as a former employee that how does the council expect us to do our jobs if we don't have the staff to do our work? How at that time, I believe staff hadn't received a raise in six years, and since then, the council has been able to raise the salaries of all of our personnel up to market, more or less. And in doing that, there's costs. We currently have seen an increase in our unfunded pension liabilities of $7.5 million over the last year. This budget has no answer for that. This past year, we drew down for $4.6 million of our reserves. That was 17 percent. So, if you imagine if you had your reserves at home and you drew down close to 20 percent of it, I think you got to think about whether or not, how you're going to be spending your money for that following year. We don't have a plan yet to how to increase our revenues. We've talked about it, but we have no set plan. So, at this point, I understand we have to pass a budget. However, I'm really having a hard time thinking I can vote for that when I see that we're kicking the can down the road. In two years, I believe, and I'll ask staff to confirm this, our finance director, I believe, said in 2021, that budget, we'll have to make up $5 million in employee salaries and CalPERS contributions. So, going forward now, as we're getting a new city manager, I feel if we approve this budget with the enhancements, we're kind of having less flexibility on somebody new to come in and maybe tweak something here or there. So, I like to hear my colleagues' thoughts before I make my final decision, and we didn't have any comments from the public. I was hoping to hear from them, too, because there is no, I guess my question for staff here would be, if we decide to have a residential parking permit program, how do we pay for that additional enforcement if it's not in this budget? Is there, how would that work?
You would have to amend the budget and add resources to hire staff to produce the enforcement that was necessary. You may be able to anticipate some additional revenues, but you wouldn't have those revenues at the outset, so those resources would need to come from the reserve or the prior-year fund balance.
So, what I'm hearing from my community is, is the parking, is additional enforcement. I'm not hearing, or at least I haven't heard in two-plus years from people saying, hey, you know what, it took me too long to get a permit to fix something at my house. It took too long to, I waited too long to get a permit. Now, there's a planning side of things that when somebody submits a set of plans to remodel or whatever, there's a certain amount of time that that's going to take, depending on the quality of the plans that get turned in. But I just wanted to make a note of that. I think my recommendation to help with streamlining some of that is to start a more of a, if you need to come in and talk about a major permit, then make an appointment. When you make an appointment, the time's reserved, the planner could be ready for it, anticipate that work, instead of somebody just showing up to the counter and then saying, hey, I want to talk about an addition, well, that person's not here right now, but if we get to more of a, you call it in, you schedule a permit. I think that would take off some of the pressure off of the community development counter, public, I'm sorry, the building permit counter into processing those permits. But those are my comments for now, and I'd just like to hear what my colleagues think.
Comments or questions from council? Michael?
I just couldn't see the light, sorry.
Excuse me. I just want to ask clarification from council member Medina. Thank you. I apologize. Are you talking about the general fund capital improvement reserves that we drew down $4 million from? Is that the fund you're talking about?
Yeah. The slide that was up there, there were four different funds, I believe, and then you added the total of the, I'm sorry. Over there. Can you find that slide, please? That's where, if you add those up, those are $4 billion.
Okay. But that particular fund was set up to do exactly what it did. It wasn't set up just to sit there. To say it was drawn down is a correct statement, but the purpose that it was drawn down for were things that we, as a council, approved of. So, I think you're giving a, I don't know...
What I'm doing, I'm stating the fact that we drew it down, and if it wasn't for $6 million of one-time funds from PG&E that are included in that, is that correct? $6 million one-time funds were placed in the general fund reserve?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, the general fund capital reserve.
Right, right, right. But I'm just talking about the total drawdown. The point is, we're not dealing with the problem, we're kicking the problem down the road in that we don't have the $5 million two years from now to pay for the additional salary and pension, or CalPERS, right?
Okay. But you're mixing up funds.
Okay. Let me clarify since you asked me the question. I'm pointing out a fact that, yes, the money is supposed to be there. It's great that it was there. It's wonderful that it was there, but it's still that, it is now not there, and it was 3.2 and 1.5, so something's going to come up. It does every year. We're going to have to do something, whether it's a electrical system that goes out, or it's another storm drain that goes out, or whatever it is. It's just, it's my concern that, yes, we're spending a lot. And it's one-time funds, Irene, $6 million. If it wasn't for that $6 million, I mean, we'd be in way worse shape.
I'm not disputing that. It's one-time funds, it's funds put aside for the purpose of spending it on capital things. It's like putting money aside for your, you know, in your own house to replace your roof at some point, or to replace your car, or whatever it is. That is separate from your day-to-day buying groceries, paying the utility bill money. I just think you're giving a kind of a false impression about where we are financially. Yes, we spent...
I haven't said anything false. Everything I said is factual.
I did not, I did not say what you said was false. I said the impression you were giving is that we had this money and that it's just gone.
No, we spent it.
Yes, we, I know we spent it, but we spent it on capital improvements that it was intended to be spent on, and we, the council, approved them. It wasn't money that was just sitting there, and then suddenly it's gone. But, okay, I'll stop now.
Okay. Vice Mayor has a comment or question?
I think the concern, and the concern...
I think the concern, and the concern that I have as well, and I'll make the same comment, is that we have reserve funds, we need to figure out a way to, what's the process to replenish those? So, point taken that their funds are there, money was taken away, and we wouldn't have spent the money, had enough in there. So, did we spend it because we didn't have it? No, we spent it because we had it, because funds were put in there as a reserve. Great, here's these funds, let's go replace the roof, let's go replace the fence. So, I think to Councilmember O'Connell, I agree. We didn't take something away that wasn't there. We had it, we planned on having it there, and we planned on using it for a project that was needed. I think that the consensus that I heard, and I heard this at the study session, is what's the plan for replenishing these funds? And that's probably where you need to, the direction we need to go is, when we're just barely getting by with our budgets, where's the extra money to put back into these funds, right? If we didn't get the $6 million from PG&E, if we didn't get the money from here, how are we going to build those up? So, I think that point, that helped clarify anything.
And the only thing I would say is that when I got on this council, the reserves were almost not there.
Yes.
That we didn't have it. It was one of my major concerns. There was a slide that was up on the Crestmore Hill, it took out a couple houses. City, if my memory and history is correct, when I was on staff, had to pay for those. So, when I got in here, and other colleagues, it's not just me, there was really no reserves, period, in an emergency. In the 2010 explosion, had it not been for the settlement and restitution, had it not been for other aspects, when we have $3 million that sit in a disaster fund right now that are on the books, just for an emergency. And we then had to establish a policy just because the reserves were getting too high, and it was, okay, well, do you want to legislate, let it keep growing, or do you put it back into the system? Do you put it back into the infrastructure? Do you make repairs? It is fair that anything that comes out of that comes before this council, and it's asked for and approved. So, it's not to say, you know, we're not making ends meet, now we're going to have to dip into our savings. It is about a project that comes up, or it's something that's necessary, that is there for that. So, I think for the historical perspective, where we were and where we are are night and day. We never had a policy because there wasn't a need for a policy to have even percentages, and what happens when it reaches the top, which then it rolls over? The surpluses that we now do as carryovers into the next budget to help balance, those carryovers were what would go into the reserves, which had happened for many times. But as we know, we're also lowering the cable enterprise. So, it's down to 375,000, which was up to almost a million. So, you know, we're also making sure that that enterprise kind of stands alone, as the others do. So, I think also it is best to give a whole global picture of the history of it and not just snapshot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I totally acknowledge that. I think it was great that we set up reserves. I'm just making a point that with those expenditures and with an older city, we have $9 million in streetlights that we need to replace, identified currently, is that correct, city manager?
I'm not sure if you're talking about the streetlight poles or
Right.
Regulated output systems.
The streetlight poles.
I'm not remembering right offhand. I believe that cost was in the $3 million range. I think it's a fair statement that we have many unmet needs, and I think it's also a fair statement that the city council's and staff's prudent management of the resources that the city has, has situated us with reserve funds that are important to the fiscal stability of the city and available for prudent use. And as the council has pointed out, the capital reserve, and as I pointed out in my comments, the capital reserve is an area that requires attention because the ability to replenish that account that is intended to be spent is something that is tighter than it has been in private, in prior years.
Right. Okay.
I'm sorry. Michael was about to talk, and I got sidetracked. Michael wants it over, all done. Okay, Michael. Thank you for your patience.
Sure, sure. This is an interesting discussion. There are so many moving parts here. It is hard to keep track of everything that's going on. I share Councilmember Medina's concerns about how fragile our budget seems to be, and we're in a relatively prosperous time in the economy, and our budget is barely showing a 5 percent uptick, I think. So, it's kind of, it's sputtering along, and I commend staff on the budget that they presented, that they were able to hold it to a 3 percent increase. I think really does show the amount of effort that went into sharpening those pencils and making sure that we're containing these things. So, you know, I am concerned about the growth that Councilmember Medina talked about. We do need to grow this. So while I'm somewhat comfortable with the base budget that was proposed, I think the supplementals are problematic to me because we're pretty, we're banking on having a surplus in the next year in order to cover those. And just looking at the historic, you know, how that ends up playing out, it could be anywhere from, I'm looking 15, 16 actuals, it was, you know, $40,000 in surplus. Following year, it was a million, and then it was negative $2 million. So, it's all over the place. So, without any real structure around how we fund that, I'm a little uncomfortable with those. And I know that all of those, I also know that staff spent a lot of time paring down that list, and I know that what you're asking for is necessary. I'm just concerned about our ability to pay for it once we commit to it. So, I'm definitely hesitant about that. We have a subcommittee that's been working on some new income sources. So, what I would recommend that we do tonight is approve the base budget and then revisit any of the supplemental requests after we have an opportunity to look at some future funding sources that could guarantee our ability to pay for those.
Laura?
Thank you. So, I ditto some of the council comments as well. First of all, again, thank you from staff. This is a difficult process. This is a tedious process, it's a challenging process, and I appreciate that all departments adhering to the really control of containing our costs. So my concerns are as such as some of the council members have already pointed out. Number one, you know, the anticipated decrease in sales tax of $148,000 going forward into of last year and looking at another $300,000 this coming year. You know, sales tax, Councilmember Salazar just mentioned that we're in a prosperous economy, but yet, and I'm spending more, I know I spend more at the stores, and spend more in San Bruno, but our sales tax is just doing the opposite. Or if you look over the last 10 years, it's just been flat. And that's, you know, a revenue source for us. Full and part-time staff representing 50 percent of all of our expenditures. The PERS, I mean, if you're not familiar with PERS, you know, unfortunately, the economy took a nosedive, there were some poor investments, living longer, and so PERS is costing us 33 percent of the salaries. And we're looking at an increase of 45 percent at 2021. And Marty, your numbers were correct in that salaries, including retirement benefits, will increase by $5 million in 2020, 2021. That's a tremendous number. Where are we going to pull out $5 million when we're just barely getting by today? As we discussed, what's the plan to replenish funds? So, I have concerns about the supplementals as well, and I am also in support of the, I think I'm in favor, I think I ditto, echo Councilmember Salazar's comments as well. So I'd like to have more discussion on the supplemental expenditures.
Any other comments from staff?
I mean, sorry, apologize. From council?
Nope.
Okay, so what I have heard is, we could take this in a couple stages, which we have done before. We could take it as to where, and city attorney, city manager, where we approve the 218, 219 general fund budget. We approve all of that, then we look at the supplementals and take those independently, correct?
Yes, so the resolution in front of you is prepared to approve the entire budget, the base budget as well as the supplemental budget, the operating and the capital. We can amend the budget according to your action. So, if you're asking, can you approve the base budget and defer consideration of the supplemental budget, the answer is yes. We would do so by noting your action and amending the resolution to match your action.
Okay, this is just to get us through stages, and I know we've taken the supplementals. I know we were going back and forth whether to call a lead or a one-time, or, you know, so we have done that. So we can go ahead if we have a consensus of the council to introduce the resolution amended, but to have the base budget as well as the CIP approved, however, amending that the supplementals be brought back or a separate discussion. Am I correct? Is that all right, city attorney, city clerk, city manager? Got three yeses, okay, that's good. So, what's the council's desire?
Well, can we break down, can we break down some of these, like, look at one-time costs and see if we can get a consensus on those versus ongoing costs? Do we go through these one at a time?
It's up to us, but I mean, if we want to take care of the base budget first, get that off the table, city attorney, is that okay, or?
Yes, you can certainly take the base budget first, make a motion on that. We'll prepare the resolutions afterward to conform with the city council's action.
Okay. Vice Mayor, were you saying that you would think of doing the base budget, CIP, and one-time enhancements?
Yes.
Okay. Suggestion, comments?
Just, there's a few other items still on the agenda that I don't want to keep everybody here on that. And I think if we start picking these apart, it's going to take some time, so
That's a great point.
I would prefer to maybe just defer the whole block
The enhancements.
And enhancements for another, for another session.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'm ready to introduce a resolution to approve the basic budget.
Base budget.
Base budget.
And CIP.
And CIP.
With the amendment that the enhancements comes back.
Yeah, without the, and removing the enhancements.
And removing the enhancements.
Does that work? Okay. So you can introduce the resolution with that amendment.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Okay, so, city manager?
We have one more action associated with the budget. That's the GAN limit.
Yes, please go ahead.
Is it, is it, okay? The, every year with the adoption of the budget, we also ask your action as required by state law to approve a GAN limit, as it's known under state law. Propositions four and 111 in 1978 established a limit on the amount of appropriations of tax-generated proceeds that a local agency can receive and spend each year. The limit is based on actual appropriations in the 1978, '79 fiscal year, and then those amounts are escalated by population and CPI and other growth factors. So the resolution that you have in front of you this evening calculates the GAN limit as required by state law, and what you can see is that, as has been the past, has been the case in the past, this city has come in well under its GAN limit. In other words, approved appropriations or proposed appropriations in the budget are significantly less than the GAN limit would allow us to appropriate and spend. So with that, the separate resolution is in your packet, and we would ask your action to approve that tonight as well.
Any questions to staff? Any comments or questions from the audience on this? Okay, any action from council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Okay, there are no reports of committee commissioners or boards, which leads us into public comment.
Robert Rico?
These are for items that are not on the agenda.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue, Honorable Mayor and Council, as your trustee to the Samhain County Mosquito and Vector Control District, I want to update you on a couple actions from the American Mosquito Control Association. They are proclaiming the week of June 24th through the 30th as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. They have a few tips to help you declare independence from those pesky bloodsuckers. Pools and open grills are going, but are you cooking up a breeding ground for mosquitoes? Standing water and dark clothing are two things that attract mosquitoes. AMCA recommends people follow the three Ds. Drain, empty outwater containers at least once per week, dress, wear long sleeve, long pants and light-colored, loose-fitting clothing. And defend, properly apply an EPA-registered repellent such as DEET or Oil of Lemon. Make your yard a mosquito-free zone by disposing of any tires, clearing roof gutters of debris, cleaning pet water dishes regularly, checking and employing and emptying children's toys, repairing leaky outdoor faucets, and changing the water in bird baths at least once a week. Here's a new one. Encouraging your neighbors to also eliminate sources on their own property is critical in a community-wide control program. Mosquitoes require water to complete their life cycles. If their water source is eliminated, so are their offsprings. Mosquitoes are more than just a nuisance. They bite, their bites can spread diseases such as Zika and West Nile virus. We must be prepared to prevent their spread throughout the public health landscape, and this requires safe, effective, sustained mosquito control and awareness in the community. AMCA stresses mosquito-borne diseases do not only affect humans, they also kill countless birds, reptiles, animals, and endangered species each year. On behalf of the district, I want to thank you for your continued support of the district as together we fight the bite. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your service representing us on the board.
Reyna Burgos?
Good evening, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity, 293 Florida Avenue. Okay, so, I'm going to talk about and request more like a follow-up after this. A meeting on last Wednesday was held at the Future Florida Park, and a lot of residents, some of the residents showed up. I came in late due to work. But we were informed that the two trees, they are there, basically are going to get cut down, they're going to get killed. And one of them is a healthy one, and I don't, the report said that one is kind of like not healthy, the other one is healthy but needs to be cut down or killed due to the playground will be underneath. Okay, we also were informed that the Florida Park will not start until next spring. I want to talk about the trees. San Bruno has the heritage tree ordinance, and based on that ordinance, it seemed like it'll be illogical and unconscionable to remove those tree, that tree. Okay? If it's going to be removed, if it's going to, the park is not going to, the construction is not going to start until the spring of next year, 2019, that's plenty of time to reconfigure the structure of the park and move the playground. I love to have the playground just moved. We need to respect that tree. It is basically a heritage tree, and if the cleaning is the issue, I myself, Reyna Burgos, pledge to take care of that tree on a weekly basis so the kids or whatever debris, the birds bring and land on the playground. That's one That's one issue. If, I have a picture on my phone, the Grundy Park has three trees so close to that playground. Why, why is it that those trees are still standing and not be cut down? Hasn't been cut down? Based on that, on the theory or on the reason that was given to us, that that was the reason why the tree had to be cut down. So I know I'm very upset and concerned. We human beings are destroying Mother Earth. I think we need to be basically respectful. That tree has been there for almost 70-plus years there, so I'm encouraged, city council, the city manager, and I, I want to have a committee to basically change, change those decisions on the Florida Park. I also have spoken to residents in the, in the area, and they actually want that tree or the trees to be kept, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tim O'Brien.
Tim O'Brien, Florida Avenue. I'm also agree with my wife Reyna that the tree, the canary pine tree, that's been there for 70-plus years, like she mentioned, that it stay, and also, I know it's, we got plenty of time before the park is, it's really not, I mean, the design is final, but I think it can be changed. There's plenty of time to reconfigure the, the park. So, and like, we said, we'll take care of that park like it's our own, I mean, it's our community park. We really are looking forward to it being completed. It's been a while, everybody's anxious, so, and we want it done right. And we appreciate the meeting that Michael Stallings had last week, and, but I think there's things that we can change. We have plenty of time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Barbara Laree.
Laree.
Barbara Laree, Clark Avenue. Quickly thanking the three council members who have the courage to look long-term at the budget and to look at the budget in its completion, not just separately. Governor Brown has warned that the state might go bankrupt because of the unfunded pension liabilities. We're seeing that in our city, and that needs to be taken care of, and something needs to be done about it. So the budget might look okay, but we have to look at what we owe, and it's pretty dire. Also, I wanted to bring up the issue of something that happened during World War II that is kind of seems to be coming up again recently, although it's not the same thing. Executive Order 1066, I believe, where the government ordered American citizens, Japanese American citizens, to be interned in concentration camps because Japan had bombed Pearl Harbor. Japan is another country, these people were American citizens, the majority. So Steve Akamoto, a former Foster City Council member, has started a fund because he feels there should be a really good monument in the Tanforan area, because that's where a lot of Japanese-American citizens were held in a, a concentration camp, basically, an internment camp. And the monument has to be funded. Some cities have given money already, but for some reason, San Bruno has not donated, even though I've asked a couple of council members. And again, this happened where they were interned at Tanforan, what is Tanforan Mall now. It's noteworthy, too, that these American citizens, the men were the most decorated members of the U.S. Armed Forces during World War II. They actually fought on the side of the United States in Europe. So I'm hoping that maybe the council can put it on the agenda for the next meeting or a, a meeting after that, to consider, so we never forget what happened, to consider donating to former council member Steve Akamoto's plan to build a beautiful artistic monument in San Bruno near Tanforan to remind us that this should never, ever happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next, please. No other speaker cards? Is there anybody else that had not submitted one that, Sandra?
Sandra Perez-Vargas.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I also went to the meeting for, at Florida Park for the tree, and we were invited to come and give our input. When we arrived, we were told that we had no input whatsoever. It was just courtesy to let us know that the trees were being cut down. One of them is sick, totally understandable, the other one is healthy, but it has, like any other tree, it has tree droppings. That's natural. San Bruno Park, we play under the trees there, there's tree droppings. You clean them. I don't understand why it would be any different to go clean our park versus this park. It doesn't really take very much. It's not going to start till spring, let's look at the designs, let's move it over, and let's save the tree for goodness sake. And Irene, I really have to say, meeting after meeting, you seem to go after Marty on everything. It's not professional, and it's not appreciated.
And is there anybody else? If not, we'll close public hearing and move on to our conduct of business.
9A, conduct of business. Receive report and adopt resolution approving the new recreation and aquatic center conceptual design.
Well, our team is assembling. May I give a, a little introduction to this item?
Just for the audience, this is Group Four is going to give a presentation, it will be a little bit, so city manager will begin.
Thank you. So this is a very exciting night. It's exciting because we have tonight the opportunity to request city council final approval of the completion of the first phase of design development for our new recreation center and community center to be built on the site of the existing Veterans Memorial Center that has served our community for over 60 years and is in need of updating, refreshing, and the opportunity to look forward to the needs and interests of our community into the next number of decades. Tonight, we have Group Four Architects and their team to present to you the results of their six-month-long process to complete the conceptual design phase of this project. And again, we're asking for your specific action tonight to approve, at the, at the conclusion of the presentation, we're asking for your action to approve by resolution the completion of this phase of the project. I'd ask your indulgence in that the team has prepared what I hope will be a very interesting and informative presentation, and it is a little bit lengthy because we wanted to make sure that the city council and the public are well-informed about the results of this conceptual design process and what we can look forward to going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dawn Marcus, a principal of Group Four Architecture, and here with me this evening is David Schnay, another principal, and then also from Group Four, we have Vance Stoner as well as Dahid Ming, who's been working on the project diligently. Our consulting architect from BSW is Stephen Springs. George Dines from Councilman Hansacker is our aquatic specialist, and also from SWA, our landscape architect, is Marco Exposito. So as your city manager mentioned, we are thrilled to be here this evening to present the conceptual design report for the new aquatics and recreation center. What we have, just as an overview in the agenda, is an update on the project schedule, a summary of the outreach that we've done to date, as well as reviewing the proposed building program, the building plans, site plans and floor plans, looking at our strategy for the parking, looking at project cost factors in terms of the construction cost model, as well as something that we've actually escalated in our project schedule to bring to you tonight, which is the operational analysis, something that we thought would give you a little bit more information to help you make an informed decision tonight. And then lastly, David is going to be presenting the conceptual design. So as we look at the last six months, it's been pretty intense, taking us through design alternatives, from site alternatives to program alternatives, conceptual alternatives to the recommended conceptual design which we're presenting here tonight. In terms of the engagement that we've done, advisory committee, we work with very closely once a month, just completed our last, our fifth advisory committee meeting at the early part of June. The advisory committee provided us great guidance and oversight as the project progressed, working closely with all the city departments and stakeholders. Over 14 meetings were conducted, many of them were like recreation, we met with them four times, really wanting to make sure that all the technical aspects of the project were reviewed with them, their input gained, and that we were able to incorporate them as the design progressed. Public meetings, this is our third council meeting. Since we've started, we presented to Park and Recreation Commission three times and to the Planning Commission two times. That sounds impressive, but I think what's even more impressive is how much engagement we got from this community. Over 1,700 participants. This is through online surveys for two rounds of outreach, as well as community meetings, open houses, and pop-up kiosks that we're having at the Easter egg hunt, as well as community days. And I think what's really telling about this engagement is how passionate people were about this project and how excited they were to share their input and help give us ideas as we move forward, all of which we are incorporating and reflecting in the design as you will see it tonight. In terms of the program review, I'm going to hand this over to Stephen, and he's going to review that for us.
Thank you, Dawn. So as a result of all that public outreach, of course, a lot of meetings with staff and advisory boards and et cetera, we, we really developed a, a consensus-based program, and it's worth noting, too, is that the, the goal isn't just for consensus, the goal is to, to really build enthusiasm, and we really believe that we've done that. But even a project of this size and scale, all, all projects have limitations. So not everybody can have everything they ever wanted in a building like this, so there was a framework for narrowing down what is the program of this building. So what you see on the slide before you is that sort of, the result of that exercise, and, and most of that are things you, you would expect, and we've talked about a number of times, for, for example, gymnasium, year-round aquatics, fitness and wellness, but also distilling what are the other major components in terms of conference rooms, classrooms, meeting space, the community hall, we heard loud and clear, was a major priority, earlier childhood education. So the, these components aren't necessarily set in stone in terms of their individual size or how many of them might be in the building, so, but the goal really is to come out of conceptual design, not with a precise plan, but a very firm foundation based on all this good input we've had, and, and really to set up this true, the next phase for schematics, set that process up for success. So this probably looks familiar to most of you, the, the, this, the building, new building is situated basically where the old building was. I'm not going to go too much into the site plan, that will come later in the presentation, but the kind of the premise of the three major components of aquatics on, generally on the east, with recreation, gymnasium in the middle, community hall and program spaces on the east. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk you through this concept plan. Again, this is to blow up what you just saw, so the, the main entrance would be generally on the east side, and this dot, if you will, I kind of call it the you are here dot, so that would be your control point. So the, the overarching concept of this plan is, again, to give us a good framework and a good foundation for design, but also flexibility as we move forward, because one thing we know is some things will change, that the design will evolve. So what this allows us to do with this particular plan and this control point, for instance, is turn right to program spaces, turn left to aquatics, continue west, potentially to aquatics, and there's another node here that would allow us potentially on a seasonal or sort of Easter Sunday situation, for example, to have another control point, or allow the evolution of the business model to provide it maybe a different price point, if you will, in that kind of area. So we're, we're trying to set up a plan that won't fall apart later in the process if you guys make a different kind of decision based on operations. So part of that involves cost recovery considerations as well, so I might try not to steal all of George's thunder, but the idea here is that your program spaces are bundled, your recreation spaces are bundled, your wet spaces are bundled, fitness and weight area represent a high-cost recovery potential. These areas would have, could potentially have a, a fair amount of cost recovery. Gym as well. Indoor pool tends to be cost-negative because it's a high operational cost, but we have party rooms situated there to help mitigate that. Those, those are high-revenue spaces. So all, all these considerations are kind of stirred into the pot, if you will, to inform the cost models that you'll see a little bit later in the presentation. And then upstairs, the community hall, so there's vertical circulation in the main lobby to take you up. The community hall overlooks the park, we're seeing some pretty dynamic views and even an outdoor deck as part of that, to really make that an attractive rental space. This is another high-revenue potential in terms of addressing cost recovery. Some classroom space upstairs and a group exercise room upstairs. There's a potential for a walking track even in the gym.
And with that, I'm going to pass the baton back. Thank you.
Okay. And so then, from our many visits and what we have heard and seen from the community, parking is of very high concern, not just in the park from what we've heard tonight, but other places in the city as well. And per your city zoning requirements, 171 spaces are required, and just to do our due diligence and look at best practices, we also looked at what is called the ITE, International Transportation Engineers Manual, and that number calculates to be 180 spaces. And so as we're looking at the site and we're looking at strategies to meet this park in need, definitely as we look at where the existing recreation center is and that existing parking lot, we're looking at opportunities to improve that, provide drop-off space, ADA spaces, safe circulation. So what's there is now is currently 73 spaces with the improvements I just mentioned, that actually reduces slightly to 71 spaces. Other opportunities for improvement, a real significant opportunity is over at the Playground incorporation yard. Currently, there's 33 spaces there. As we're looking at opportunities to increase parking but not decrease park space, this is a really good opportunity. We're coming in and being more efficient in the parking layout and just working within the constraints of the hardscape and areas to, I will call it the east, towards the bay, we're actually able to increase the parking spaces to 89 spaces. So we're able to gain 56 spaces just by being creative and working over on that area. As we look for other potential parking, the shared pool parking, which is over, shared with the church on the south side of the site, currently there's 69 spaces there. There have been preliminary discussions on opportunities to increase shared parking use over there, the empty lot there, very preliminary and not actually even necessary as we look at the proposed parking count for this early phase of 229 spaces. But definitely, as opportunities may arise in the future, it is a fallback to add additional spaces as the city may desire. So with that, we're going to step into project cost factors, our project cost model, and operational analysis. So as we look at operational and capital costs, strategies for managing capital costs, and our advisory committee is probably a little tired of hearing me say that this is something that needs to be done diligently throughout the project, is really managing these construction costs, especially today in our economy. And ways that we're looking at doing that is planning for flexibility, designing to accommodate phased implementation such as the additional parking that I just mentioned, as well as potentially the outdoor pool as an ad alternate. as well as potentially the outdoor pool as an ad alternate, including bid alternates is a way that we are planning flexibility, agility, so if the market goes one way, we can adjust without losing a step in the process and the schedule. So very important in terms of that cost management, as well as considering multiple bid packages. And this is something definitely during schematic design that can be further explored, but really wanting to consider how to mitigate impact in park users, how to look at reducing both costs as well as the project schedule, maybe doing an early bid package for some of the site work, some of the parking work, get that done, let that be up, let the park function, potentially then go move into the building bid package. These are all strategies, nothing set in stone, and definitely will be explored in detail with city staff as well as city council in the next phases. And then the comprehensive budgeting. So the cost model that I'll show includes all soft costs, includes furniture, fixtures and equipment, contingencies, all the known costs that we can identify, and allowances for those unknown costs in terms of escalation and contingencies. In terms of the operational cost goals, very clear hearing, that is, we look at increasing the facility size, that proportionally definitely cannot increase the operational costs as we just got through our budget exercise tonight, but really looking at ways to provide sufficient revenue to offset this additional square footage, additional programs and services that can be provided to the community. So looking at designing for efficient, flexible operations, spaces that are easy to survey and operate and can adjust for seasonal or special event uses, as well as consider operational efficient design. One of the things we have mentioned is the opportunity potentially to design photovoltaics as an option for the building so that the utility costs might be offset by the energy generated in the site, and some refinements to the building roof and the conceptual design David will review just in a short minute. So looking at our project budget cost model, kind of breaking this up into pieces as packages for you, just because they seem to be, as I presented the site plan, you could see how there were different pieces on different parts of the site, so we've kind of broken it up that way logically. So looking at the building and the adjacent parking as well as the site around it, we're looking at a budget of thirty-nine million, and this includes the furniture, fixtures and equipment, soft costs, as well as site work, site preparation, parking and landscape, as well as outdoor pool as a potential ad alternate. The city parkway, creek and associated site work is two-point-three million, with the corporation yard parking lot just at a million, and then the escalation and project hard cost contingencies are at seven-point-two million. So right now, looking at a project cost model at forty-nine-point-five million, understanding clearly that the city's budget for this work is fifty million. So with that, I'm going to hand this over for operational analysis, and George will walk us through that.
Good evening. As we've mentioned, the facility will have a tremendous effect on the residents and community of San Bruno in terms of recreation, health, fitness, socialization, but with that also comes an effect on the operational budget. And so this piece of the study was included at this phase to give a preliminary look at the effects that the facility will have on the operating annual budget for the city of San Bruno. We start that with researching the, excuse me, market area, knowing that there's forty-four thousand, approximately forty-four thousand residents in San Bruno, but that we also have another five-hundred thousand people within about a fifteen-minute drive time. We have a graphic there on the right that just shows some of the area aquatic and fitness and recreational providers up and down the peninsula that some of the, you know, community here would currently use. And so this is really the starting point as we start to look at the number of visits that the facility will gain and the types of revenue opportunities that exist. Some of the premises that we start out with are, first off, with the facility budget, we are including both full and part-time personnel, we're including operating expenses, repair and maintenance budgets, utility costs for the pools as well as the buildings, chemical costs, you know, a variety of operational supplies both for the building and for the program. We also, working out of the premise that the indoor pool would operate year-round, the seasonal, outdoor pool would be seasonal, but that the facility overall could see in between two-hundred-and-seventy and three-hundred visits a day in terms of daily admission and monthly or annual passes that would be based on the market rates for other comparable facilities within this area. And so looking at utilization and market rates of similar facilities, that helps us to look at the number of visits, and then also working with city staff, we've generated the operational revenue and expenses for the facility. When we start to look at revenue, we have a variety of means and programs that will generate revenue for the recreation and aquatic centers. We mentioned this will have a tremendous impact here on the San Bruno community from, you know, just the monthly passes and daily admissions. These are typically generated primarily through the fitness and the aquatic areas. You know, it's a recreational gym for cardio and fitness swimming and lap swimming, recreational swimming at the outdoor pool during the summer season. But we also look at swim lessons and water fitness and recreational classes. We looked at camps and birthday party rentals, the community hall obviously would have rentals associated with it, as Stephen mentioned, and so we take all these, we break them into separate categories, but really find that there could be anywhere from two-point-four to two-point-seven million dollars in total revenue on an annual basis for the facility. And so what our next slide shows is how that looks compared to the proposed twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget that you heard about earlier, and then in terms of the revenue and expenses, that two-point-four to two-point-seven million dollar range for revenue, and then a three-point-one million dollar range for expenses. So overall, the facility is coming close to eighty percent on the low end for cost recovery, and then upwards of ninety percent on the high end when you look at the expenses versus the revenue on an annual basis. So with that, I will turn it over to David, who will can take you through the conceptual design strategies.
Great. Thank you, George. And it's a privilege to present now the conceptual design, and we, through this phase, try to accomplish three things. First of all, to create a beautiful recreation and aquatic center, two, to enhance the park that it's going in, which is so important, and three, to reflect and celebrate community values. So first of all, what is conceptual design phase? What is that? The easy way to think of it is between starting, which we did in January, and when we get ready to go out to bid, but that's one hundred percent of the design phase. At conceptual design, we're at the fifteen percent milestone, so we're just very, very early in. And what I can show you now, I can guarantee is, nothing will look exactly like this when it's done, but we're setting the big directions of where the project's going, we're setting where the project should be, the building should be located, what are the key design strategies, and what are the design values? And so with that, the way we figure that out and how we celebrate community values is through all that community engagement. In addition to the programmatic questions, we're asking what were people's design values? Underpinning it in the first round, and just to repeat, three design values were essential. First was to create a warm and inviting building, second was to have great indoor-outdoor connections, and the third was to enhance and engage the park. And so with that, we, as Stephen Springs presented earlier, we settled on the site strategy of going all-new construction at the hill, basically replacing the current facility, where recreation center where it is today. So coming in round two, we presented multiple design strategies. How do we meet those various goals? And we had two strategies, the park pavilions and the park arc, and the park pavilion scheme had two-to-one responses from it, but as the nature of this early stage of design, we can take the best features of both and combine them together in a hybrid design. We also, it was great to be out on city days in the park and be able to look at the building and say, how do you love what the building looks like today, the recreation center, we'd like it to look better. Accent materials, just judiciously using some select materials somewhere, where can we enhance what the exterior would look like? Warm materials very much setting and fitting to the park setting of terracotta or wood were up there. And then particularly the park setting, how do we make this building on the indoor-outdoor connections? What type of outdoor spaces? Working with our landscape architect, community gathering, interactive amenities, flexible lawns, speak to the social nature of this facility. People want to be able to gather around the building in indoor-outdoor connections, and you'll see all of these strategies manifesting itself in our great unveiling right here, our artist rendering, just fresh off the drawing boards. What we have is a shallow bird's eye view looking west, we have city park drive in the foreground, the little bits of the tennis courts, the park continues much behind us as well, and continues beyond what we see to the picnic areas and up to the county park as well. And we have Crystal Springs Road to the right behind the eucalyptus trees, and we have our new combined recreation and aquatic center shown here on the right. And that idea and the strategy here was how do we get, enhance the park to have the park continue to flow around the building? This arcing shape that we've created is a way to make sure the open spaces are honored, the whole outdoor experience is beautiful. And the park pavilion strategy is to take each of the three primary programmatic areas, the aquatics on the distant part, the recreation in the middle, and the community spaces closest up, to have each one of those have a distinct identity with indoor connection spaces and connective tissue between them. And so that's what we see here with these features, looking to really just create a beautiful harmonious design that will fit into the park. We'll give you a little fly-through, and I think Vance, I might need you to, oh, it goes by itself just with a click, how lovely. So this is a simplified three-dimensional model that we're coming in on our re-lined city park drive, looking at the first, the community pavilion and the deck up above, the entry between going indoor connections, the recreation spaces, the fitness and group exercise, then coming up to, if the budget is adequate, the pool, the water's very transparent there, the pool's full, secure boundaries all around it, and having the distinct roof forms that people were looking forward to, and having distinct character. So it's not just one big sort of monolithic building, but the pavilions break down the scale of the building and create some unique character. And now sort of arcing back around it, you see there's a lot of opportunity for each of these pavilions and features of the building to really connect back and create wonderful indoor-outdoor connections, views, and just so as you're using the facility, you'll get to enjoy both all the features inside and what's next, what's outdoors. So a static view of just the model that we see, another bird's eye view looking towards the north and towards the east, and the view towards the entry, having much better street presence and park presence as you come in for it. There's a lot more we can present, but we're really just at the very beginning of the design process. It was wonderful to get the amount of, we do a lot of community engagement of projects all around California, you usually expect to hear some constructive criticism, we were so overwhelmed by positive support for both of these design strategies, and people are so excited for it. I really think we have really the, all the impetus to move forward and to continue to refine this project through the next phases to deliver to you a fantastic project that meets those goals, which is the segue to the final part of the presentation, which what comes next. With your approval of the conceptual design phase and with your authorization to start with schematic design, the project would then go through from the fifteen percent to the thirty percent milestone to the sixty to ninety percent getting ready to bid by the end of 2020, and then by the end of 2021, the goal is to then have this project open up. So did I get those dates right? Okay, great. And with that, I will leave this beautiful rendering on the, and our whole team is available for questions, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much for the presentation, from all of you and the work and the effort. Questions or comments from Council? Michael? Thank you. Very welcome.
Thank you for all the work that you've put into this, and I know that, I've seen you guys out there in the community, you're definitely making yourselves available, but I was looking at the number of responses, and it was about four hundred in total responses? Is that what I was seeing on that graph?
Over seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred, okay.
Which is...
Okay. And for a project like this, in your experience, is that a fairly good response, or is it average?
Pretty, you're up there.
Okay.
Very high up there. I would say most cities, when you do public outreach, just in community meetings, if you can get fifteen, thirty people to attend, you're usually pretty pleased. Once you hit over five hundred, councils are usually pretty impressed. I would say anything over seventeen hundred, you should be very pleased that you've got such great engagement and participation from your community.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from Council? Irene? Any questions? I apologize.
Thank you, too. It's fabulous, all the things that you've put together and all the community input that you've gathered. I just have a couple of kind of housekeeping questions, I guess. Has any thought been given about where the old pool is and what happens with that? Do we demolish it and use it for parking, or what's with that?
Excellent question. I apologize for leaving that out of the presentation. So the general concept is, so the pool, existing pool, is in this new meadow space here. So the idea of, and it was a question in the community, what's happening to it with both the pool and the recreation center being combined? It's an indoor pool as the foundation of the building, that is the third pavilion here. If we have budget for an outdoor pool, it will be adjacent to it, and the indoor pool will, even if that is the only pool, will have indoor-outdoor connections, doors that can open up, you can go out towards an outdoor deck, so we'll have that wonderful year-round feel and the indoor-outdoor connections that we want. The pool can remain up during construction, which is one of the advantages of this strategy, and then we would at the end remove the existing pool and restore the open space in its place.
Okay. And my other question is about solar paneling or solar roof. I thought I heard someone mention something about it, and I was just making sure...
Yeah, Dawn asked me to mention that, and I left that out, I apologize for going brief, so briefly. The roofs that we see here are definitely all great candidates for solar panels, and so in part of our planning is to see how this building can be potentially net-zero energy, be energy efficient at a minimum, and to have that where you could lease the solar panels or other aspects of that and pay that back through your utility purchases. So we'll definitely be refining the design, and we've already internally been calculating how much roof space we need to get a significant portion of the energy usage of the building covered through the rooftops.
Okay. Have you, and I've read someplace, and I don't know any of the details, but I've read about solar panels that are the roof, or the roof is made of solar panels. I don't know if that's even practical or anything, but it was just an intriguing idea.
There are lots of different solar technologies. I don't know that those technologies are exactly appropriate for this scale of roof here, but, right, but we'll look at which type of solar panels, and usually the crystalline panel arrays, and arranging them on either the flat roofs or the sloped roofs for, it has excellent solar orientation for this project, so we're heading it off in a good direction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Lauren?
One final comment, great presentation, thank you so much, and I'm excited, it's like, so next question is, when can we start digging? But really, in reality of it is, is that the longer we wait and go through this process, construction costs are going up. So when I hear the end of 2020, how do we improve that date? How do we get there closer sooner?
Excellent question, and I started alluding to some of the thought process that we've already started putting into that, opportunities that we have to improve the parking lots and perhaps city parkway as initial bid packages potentially could reduce the project schedule, reduce escalation associated with the project, and possibly, probably one of the biggest incentives to look into that is to improve access and usability of the park so that we're not being quite so disruptive in one big move. We add the extra parking, improve the street, let the community have access and use that while the building is being constructed. We have other ideas that we are going to continue to pursue at looking at reduction of the construction schedule, and what I just mentioned potentially could reduce the construction schedule from anywhere to three to four months, just on the tail end. But those are all great, great strategies that we're starting to think about now.
Great, thank you.
Marty? Sorry.
Yes, it's very impressive, and I'm also impressed with your outreach and your... I, and I'm also impressed with your outreach and your communication to our community. I definitely want to thank you for that. You mentioned the add-on of this track. Do you have an estimate of what that cost would be? It's really preliminary, but...
Yeah, it's actually not as expensive as you'd imagine because the structure is already there for the building. My recollection, and don't quote me, is it's like $750,000 or less. And so, but those opportunities, we're not going to let fall by the wayside. We are committed to tracking those through schematic design, working with the funding plan, working with the design, working with prioritization of figuring out what exactly are the most important elements to include in this budget and move forward with those. And so those are all things that can be worked out and identified and decided upon during schematic design.
Great. And I really like how you're thinking to phase and kind of do different parts of the project. I think it would be great to go ahead and do those, do the parking on the very east side of, it's tough getting to the park, you know, especially with, on that side, it's more catering to the younger, the younger kids, so. And parking for baseball is terrible. So I think a lot of people will be happy with, happy for that. So it's a great job.
Any other questions or comments? Any action from Council? This is a resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Very exciting. The work begins. Thank you. Next item?
Item 9B, Doc Resolution Approving the San Bruno Community Foundation 2018-19 Budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Just have a very brief report before we introduce Leslie Hadamia, who will have a short PowerPoint presentation. So as the City Council knows, the bylaws of the Community Foundation require that the City Council approve its budget every year. And you've done that for all of the years that the foundation has been in existence. And this year is no different. We've included the budget for your review. It was adopted by the foundation at their last meeting. And Director Hadamia is here to provide you with some details about what the foundation has accomplished in the last year, a great many things, and what their budget looks like for your review. So with that, I'll turn it over to Leslie.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of the San Bruno Community Foundation. I am Leslie Hadamia, the Executive Director. And with me this evening are two of our board members, our Secretary John McLaughlin and Board Member Emily Roberts. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to give you some of the highlights of the past year for the foundation. After a brief startup phase that focused mainly on the administrative end of things, for the past two years, we have been busy launching and administering a broad array of programs that utilize, for the benefit of the entire San Bruno community, the restitution funds resulting from the 2010 gas pipeline explosion. First, let me just highlight the two programs that the foundation runs. The first is a Cressmore Scholarship. In February of 2016, we launched the Cressmore Neighborhood Memorial Scholarship to honor the community members who most directly endured the 2010 tragedy, especially the eight members who lost their lives. The scholarship assists San Bruno students who have demonstrated a deep commitment to the San Bruno community. Earlier this month, we awarded our third set of college scholarships totaling $120,000 to nine impressive San Bruno High School and Community College graduates. I want to thank those Councilmembers who were able to join us at our board meeting and reception earlier this month, and especially to the mayor who spoke and addressed the scholarship winners as well. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read their biographies. They're a very impressive group and really give us hope for the future, and we really see them as future leaders in this community. Our second program is the Community Grants Fund. We also created this in 2016, and it allows local community groups the ability to apply for funding of up to $25,000 in grants for programs that benefit the San Bruno community. At the end of 2017, we awarded our second set of community grants, which totaled $300,000, thanks in part to a generous $100,000 donation from YouTube and Google. The 23 grants, sorry that is so small, but it shows you the how many grants we gave out. It was, we gave out 23 this year to a wide diverse array of community groups, everything from the Catholic Worker Hospitality House doing homelessness work to Samoan Solutions for their cultural work and to the Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities. The city received two of the community grants, one for the sister, Narita Sister City Exchange Program, and another for a bike fix-it station near the BART station. We will launch our third community grant cycle next week with an application deadline of September 26th. And I'm happy to announce for the first time tonight that YouTube and Google.org have again agreed to contribute $100,000 to this program. And so with our $200,000 from the foundation, we will again be able to give out $300,000 in community grants at the end of this year. We've also been thrilled to support local public schools through two separate strategic initiatives. The first is our Music Education Strategic Initiative, which we launched a year ago, and it aims to make music education a hallmark of San Bruno's public schools. We're providing nearly a half million dollars over three years to the San Bruno Education Foundation and the Cappuccino High School Alumni Association to benefit the music programs at all of the San Bruno Park School District schools and Cappuccino High School. We just completed year one of the initiative, during which we funded the Music for Minors Program at all six elementary schools. We funded instrument and equipment purchases at Parkside Intermediate School. And as you can see on the slide, we purchased or refunded beautiful new uniforms for the Cappuccino Marching Band, which they wore at the Posey Parade in the, in the photos. We look forward to the initiative's inaugural Music in the Air Community Concert, which will showcase all of the music programs and take place this fall. The foundation also recently approved a $250,000 strategic grant to support the San Bruno Park School District's transformation efforts. The funding will cover the program implementation fees for the SEAL literacy program being implemented at Allen and Bel Air Elementary Schools, particularly to benefit the large population of English learners in grades kindergarten through grade three at those schools. The funds will also allow Parkside to utilize the expertise of Partners in School Innovation to transform the culture at the middle school and provide better support for the teachers and leadership team there. Both of these programs are aimed at increasing academic achievement in the district. And finally, we're excited about the many different programs and projects we are funding in partnership with the city itself. So we are proud to support the city's plan to build a new recreation and aquatic center in San Bruno City Park with a commitment of $50 million, which you just heard about. We are funding the conceptual design phase, which is just being completed, with a $550,000 grant, which is part of the 50 million. We look forward to hearing from the city about the next steps in this project, including the city's business plan for operating this much-needed new resource. And we look forward to partnering with the city to fund the next stage of the project. In 2017, the foundation committed $200,000 to support the city's development of the new Florida Avenue Park as well. We dispersed this grant to the city several months ago, and we look forward, as you all do, to the park's completion. For the past three years, the foundation has been a proud sponsor of the city's Community Day in the Park. This year, we also assisted the city in bringing in additional sponsors, including the Samet Family Foundation, YouTube, PG&E, Skyline College, and Recology San Bruno. And together, they collectively contributed $26,000 to the event, which was enjoyed just three weekends ago in the park. We're also thrilled to partner with the city and YouTube to bring pedestrian safety improvements to San Bruno this year, with $126,000 from YouTube and $138,000 from the foundation, flashing beacons now aid pedestrian, aid pedestrians at three unsignalized crosswalks, two at Parkside, which is the photo on the left, and one at Portola Elementary School. A fourth set of flashing beacons will appear on the south end of San Mateo Avenue in the next couple of weeks, and a final set will be installed later this summer near John Muir Elementary School, which will see increased traffic with the closure of El Cristal. And finally, in March, the board approved a strategic grant totaling about $161,000 to the city for three projects aimed at enhancing the effectiveness of San Bruno's first responders. These projects are police mindfulness training, emergency shelter supplies, the purchase of which the council approved in the consent calendar tonight, and critical facilities, site assessments, and action plans. The initiative was unfortunately very timely, approved by the board just prior to the YouTube shooting at the beginning of April. As a way to say thank you for the, to the community for its support, Google pledged $100,000 to our first responder initiative and agreed to match donations from Google and YouTube employees. With the matching, the entire Google and YouTube donation is likely to total about $300,000. We are now in discussions with city staff about additional first responder projects in the city to be funded with, funded by these additional donations. I think you'll agree that it's been another very busy year for the foundation, and we're very pleased with where we are. In accordance with our bylaws, before the council this evening is consideration of the foundation's fiscal year 2018-19 budget. Just a few words about the budget. The expenses include nearly $5 million in direct program disbursements, including a $4 million anticipated disbursement for the next phase of the Recreation and Aquatic Center project, and the balance for scholarships, community grants, a second first responder grant, Community Day, and the School Transformation Strategic Grant, plus about $390,000 in support costs. We do not show investment income for our two investment accounts on our budget and internal monthly financial statements, as they do not reflect the amount of funds that are actually available for operations. The board designates the payout or amount to transfer from both pools to cover the year's cash flow needs. Thus, what the budget shows are the funds actually available for operations in the coming year. It shows that we're taking a 1.95% payout from the quasi-endowment, which will cover our community grants and scholarship cash needs, which is about $320,000. And then the balance will come from our strategic pool of about $4 million. We respectfully ask the City Council to approve the foundation's 2018-19 budget, and this action will allow the foundation to keep moving forward on its current trajectory to use the restitution funds to enhance the quality of life for all of us in San Bruno. Before I close, I'd just like to acknowledge by name the other board members who have been key to the foundation's success and are not with us tonight, President Nancy Kraus, Vice President Frank Headley, Treasurer Tim Ross, and Board Members Pat Bohm and Dr. Regina Standback-Straoud. I'd also like to acknowledge the volunteer service of our foundation's Investment Committee, which has done a tremendous job in shepherding and overseeing our investment accounts. They include, include in addition to Treasurer Tim Ross, who chairs the committee, and Vice President Headley, community members Tony Clifford, Mark Hayes, and Georgie Anne Perkins. Additionally, the foundation has benefited considerably from the support of City Manager Connie Jackson and City Attorney Mark Zaffarano. I hope that you'll agree that the foundation has had a very productive year again this past year, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our activities or our budget.
Thank you, Leslie. Questions from Council? Michael?
Here, thank you. Leslie, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done. I was part of the council that established the foundation, and I think that you and the board have done an amazing job of bringing that vision that we had to reality, and it's really amazing what you're doing. I do have one question. Looking forward to the time when our, our new recreation center is completely built and that $5 million is no longer part of your investment pool, how is that going to impact your, your operations? That's seriously going to hinder. Are you planning for new sources of revenue post the 50 million payout?
So the way we divided the original, approximately 70 million that came in, 15 million was set aside to be treated as, like an endowment. And that has now grown to 17 and a half million. And the, and hopefully by the time the whole 50 million is dispersed, that will have grown even slightly higher. And at a minimum, that source of funding would be able to continue the foundation at a smaller scale. In addition to the 50 million going out for the recreation center, there probably, depending on how the markets do over the next couple of years, there should be several more million dollars that may be dispersed, either in other larger grants or could be put into that quasi-endowment to help fund the foundation on an ongoing basis. As you've seen, we've also been able to attract some money from Google and other community partners, and we will continue to do that as appropriate. And at some point, as we scale down, that may become a bigger part of our operations, and we'll have to figure that out as we move forward.
Sounds great. Thank you. And thanks to the board.
Laura?
Just, just to piggyback on Councilmember Salazar's comments, I mean, this has really been a great opportunity for San Bruno and the continued donations and the avenues that probably never would have happened in some of these cases. So I think it's really been a win-win for the city. Not only did we get the funds and we're, we've got this beautiful community center that we're going to see in, in the future, but this opportunity to really raise funds and to give back to our community is pretty amazing. So fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Marty?
I just want to say thank you for all the work you do and the board, and I think it's, it's just incredible that you're able to bring music back, you know, and, and, and support those that need a little bit more help in our schools. And clearly, the park is, is something that our community is waiting for. And I just had one question. On the typical return on, of, of the quasi-endowment, I know there's a whole plan on that, but it, what's your, what's your, what's your goal of a return on, on, on those funds?
I don't know that we have an exact percent goal. It's being, it's being invested sort of under a traditional endowment strategy. It's a mix of about 60 to 70% more on the equity side, 30 to 40% on fixed income, which is sort of a traditional endowment strategy for investment. We have gone from 15 million two years ago to already being at 17 and a half million in just a short amount of time, with a slight drawdown on that to payout for community grants and scholarships these past two years. The overall, just so you know, we took about $70 million from the city. Our total investment portfolio at the end of May was at about 73.5 million, and that's in addition to all of the funds we have spent over the past several years. So we have, you know, with investment income, have covered all of our expenses up till now and made a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Council? There is a resolution. Any action?
I'll introduce the resolution approving their budget.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. I've been asked, we're going to take about a five-minute break before we go to the next two items. Okay, let's reconvene the meeting of the San Bruno City Council. We are on conduct of business. We are on item C.
Provide direction to staff regarding cannabis-related activities in the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. First of all, I just have a request from the city clerk that if anybody does wish to speak on this item, please go ahead and fill out a speaker card if you wouldn't mind so we can make sure that we capture anybody, anybody's comments. So we have basically three... So, we have basically three topics to discuss tonight. What has the city done to date with respect to cannabis? What have all the other governmental agencies that are relevant to the topic done, federal government, state, county, and other cities? And last but not least, what are the city's options? And we're going to discuss those in some detail, but in short, there are, in essence, two with variations. So, the first option is to continue the prohibition on cannabis-related activities. You've got a moratorium now that expires in October. We'll talk about that. The second option would be to allow some or all of those activities and decide how you want to regulate them. And so, as part of that question, you'll need to answer the question of whether you want to impose regulatory fees on those activities for cost recovery. And you'll also want to discuss whether to tax those activities, and the first opportunity for you to do that is going to be at the 2019 election. On that election, you can also, if you wish, place other measures on the ballot, such as advisory measures or regulatory measures, and we'll talk about that. So, you may be pleased to know that I'm not going to go through the comprehensive 12-page staff report in detail. It's late. I'll assume you've read it, or if you haven't read it, you can. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. There's a lot of additional information in the staff report, both for you and for members of the public. There's a lot of information that isn't in the staff report. We actually tried to cull down this what looks like about a nine-inch sheaf of information into those 12 pages, and so while we've done our best, we're not perfect. So, we might have left something out that you're interested in, and if so, please feel free to ask, but we'll discuss all of those things in some detail. All right. So, just quickly, what has the city done with respect to cannabis? Well, in 2011, the first thing was that you adopted an ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana distribution facilities in the city, and that ordinance is on the books and has remained unchanged. In October of 2016, about a month before the November 2016 election, the City Council felt that it was possible that the voters of the state, and frankly, of the city, might vote in favor of Proposition 64. And so, in order to keep all of their options open and make sure that there weren't cannabis facilities opened up in the city without city regulation or taxation, the city adopted a moratorium, an urgency moratorium, on all of the commercial activities associated with cannabis. And that was specifically in advance of the 2016 election. So, in November of 2016, the Prop 64 did pass by about 57 to 43. And then, in September of the following year, the City Council extended the moratorium for another year. Now, why did they do that? And the reason was that the City Council wanted us, staff, to study and explore all of the different options that were coming forward. They wanted us to report back to you about what was the federal government doing, what was the state doing, what were other cities doing, what were they doing about regulation, what were they doing about taxation, and all of those things. And the whole area of cannabis was in flux at that time, and to some degree, still is. So, what staff has done for you in the interim is gone to a lot of different sources, received a lot of different information, tried to analyze as much of that information as possible, and provide you with the most comprehensive and informative report that we could. Of course, we haven't caught everything. We don't know what's happening in every single state. We don't know the details of every single cannabis program in other jurisdictions, but we do have enough information to give you some broad outlines. So, that's what the city has done so far. All right. Well, what has the federal government done? Well, the slide's pretty short, but it actually says a lot. The federal government has really done very little, except to discourage in any way possible the distribution and commercialization of cannabis, both medical and otherwise. It's still scheduled as an illegal drug with no medical use. That's what the federal government says. They have opposed state efforts to legalize cannabis, and I think it's fair to say that they have provided uncertain guidance, if any guidance, to cities about what they can and can't do. They've left open the possibility of prosecution for federal crimes. And it's sort of interesting, just as an aside, that I've actually seen that in my own research, where individuals who are involved in the cannabis business, both in terms of consulting and otherwise, always have in the back of their mind the thought that somehow the federal government might prosecute them for something. And this goes to city officials, it goes to city employees who handle the money that cannabis producers bring in, it goes to consultants, it goes to attorneys who were involved in the business. Everybody seems to be slightly concerned, and I think that with the current administration, it's fair to say that that uncertainty is going to remain for at least another couple of years, unless there's some major changes in Congress or otherwise. So, that's the federal government backdrop. So, against that backdrop, what has the state done? And we'll talk a little bit about this. So, after Prop 64 passed, they created three agencies to come up with regulations to license cannabis facilities. And there's 19 different kinds of them, and those are sort of broadly classified, like distribution, like retail, so a storefront, like cultivation, which obviously is growing plants indoors, like testing, and manufacture. So, there's all kinds of different licensing, and there's, within all of those different areas, there's different kinds of classifications. And those are based on the size of the facility and what they're doing. So, the state issues those licenses, but Proposition 64 said that cities retain full local control to either prohibit if they want or to allow and regulate. So, the state gave, did allow local control of cannabis. And so, that's what you've done. You've taken that local control and adopted a moratorium which expires in October of this year. The other thing the state has done is adopted a couple of different laws to try to harmonize the medical and non-medical commercial cannabis operations. And it's a little complicated, because you might remember, medical started first, and then commercial came later. So, there were regulations about medical, then there were regulations about commercial, and now they've tried to, they've worked on an effort to try to combine those regulations and to treat them similarly. There is one interesting difference, though, that from a revenue standpoint, the state says that you can't get any sales tax revenue from sales of medical cannabis. So, they put that in a bit of a special category, and there may be other differences as time goes on. So, what else has the state done? I think they've extensively studied the creation of a separate banking system, because this is one of the big roadblocks to the full commercialization of cannabis, not only in California, but in all of the other states that have tried this. So, when we looked at Oregon, we looked at Maryland, we looked at Colorado, what we found in all of those states is that there are banks, including banks in California, that will handle cannabis transactions. They're just doing so at a risk to themselves and at high cost for their depositors. So, for example, what those banks do is, so far, the federal government hasn't withdrawn or invalidated their FDIC insurance, which they could do, but they haven't, so they've kind of left them alone. But they're still required, the banks, to fill out all of the paperwork and regulatory compliance that are required of federally chartered banks. So, there's suspicious activity reports, there are reports for money laundering, there are reports for terrorism. There's all kinds of things that these banks are required to do to comply with federal law and receive money from cannabis providers, in all doing so in this area of uncertainty with the prospect of some sort of uncertain federal prosecution that may or may not happen. And so, I think it's fair to say that the cannabis businesses have tried to maintain as much compliance as possible by setting up separate corporations that you funnel the money through, so that the banks aren't directly working with the cannabis companies. It's all very complicated, but the bottom line is, there's still a great deal of uncertainty about the banking system. I think that ultimately, some state or states may be effective at setting up their own bank, that then can be used. That hasn't happened yet anywhere, and it's going to require the federal government to approve of that. There was an interesting legal case in, I think it was Maryland, in which one of the banks, a local bank, sued the Federal Reserve in Maryland for failing to authorize its ability to work with cannabis businesses. And before the case went to trial, they settled, and the federal bank said, okay, sure, we'll let you do it, but only under this very restrictive set of conditions. So, even banks that are doing this are, I think, facing regulatory compliance hurdles. So, that's what's happened, basically, at the state level. All right. What is the county closer to home, what has the county of San Mateo done? So, what they did is they held a couple of study sessions in 2016 and 17, wondering whether it would be possible for all of the cities on the peninsula, in San Mateo County, to get together and have some sort of coordinated approach. And what that would involve is not necessarily the county telling the cities what to do, but instead having the cities agree that whatever tax they might impose through a ballot measure wouldn't result in, I think, what everyone was fearing, which was a race to the bottom. In other words, City A adopts a 10% tax, City B says, well, we want the businesses more, we're going to make our tax 9%, the next one goes 8%, and so you would have a situation in which it would be a race to the bottom, and then the revenue would really be inconsistent. After some study for a year or two, the county, I think, determined that there really wasn't that much interest among the cities to do anything in a coordinated way. So, they went ahead, and they do allow now the county in unincorporated areas limited commercial cultivation, and you'll see that on the chart that's attached to the staff report. All right. Well, let's take a look at that chart. It's attachment one. We didn't put it up on the screen, because it's way too small, much smaller than the chart that the folks for the aquatics that are put up. But I can basically summarize it for you. So, there's eight cities out of the 20 that have adopted a permanent ban of some sort. Three of them, including San Bruno, had an interim ban. I just heard, just recently, a couple of hours ago, that Daily City approved cannabis facilities in the city, and I haven't seen their report or looked at the meeting yet, so I don't know what they're doing exactly. Couple are thinking about it, should we allow retail or not. One city said, we don't want any of those things, we just want delivery. And then finally, we have six cities out of the 20 that have allowed various combinations of these activities, some cultivation, some manufacturing, some testing, some distribution, and so on. So, that's what the cities have done on the peninsula. All right. Let's take a look and see, what are the city's options? And as I mentioned at the beginning of the report, there are basically two. So, the first one is to continue the prohibition that you've already adopted on cannabis activities. Well, what does that actually mean? So, state law requires us to allow personal indoor cultivation of up to six plants, and our moratorium allows that, and any ordinance you might choose to adopt also has to allow that. The city could enact additional regulations on that if you wanted to. Cities really have stayed away from that. It's a difficult thing to regulate, you know, how many plants people are growing in their house, and, you know, whether they're watering them right and all kinds of things. So, they really stayed away from that sort of knock on the door, and can I come inside your house to see your cannabis plants? The city could certainly adopt, between now and October, what we'll refer to as a permanent ordinance, and a permanent ordinance only is as permanent as the City Council wishes, because it can be amended at any time. But what that ordinance would do is it would memorialize what's in your moratorium. In other words, it would ban all other cannabis activities that are not otherwise allowed by Proposition 64. And if the City Council were to do that, then that process should be completed by October 25th. That's when the moratorium expires. So, what you'd need to do is introduce the ordinance at some point, and then have it adopted by September 25th, because it takes 30 days to go into effect. So, that's option number one. All right. Option number two is a little more complicated. So, option number two is you could decide to allow some or all of the activities that are on this slide. You could say, for example, we want you to look at retail in the city, we want to look at delivery, we want to allow cultivation in certain places, we're interested in manufacturing, we would like testing facilities, or we would approve of a distribution center in the city for cannabis, maybe from other parts of the city. So, when you're thinking about these options, one thing to consider is the fact that you'll need to allocate, I think, both staff and consultant resources to develop these regulations and then to implement them. So, what does that mean? Well, obviously, in addition to time from our office, most cities that have done this have used professional outside consultants. We use community services, and we've actually had a couple of conversations with them about what it involves in terms of coming up with regulatory schemes and estimating, how are you going to maximize your revenue from those different businesses? Because, for example, you can tax retail in one way, delivery perhaps in a different way, cultivation differently, manufacturing differently, there's all kinds of options, depending upon which one of these particular activities you pick. So, we'll probably need some assistance with that framework, and also to determine what the regulatory fee should be. So, you can certainly direct us at the conclusion of the meeting, that you'd like us to study some of these options and bring them back to you for some further discussion. And that would end up being in a zoning ordinance or in some other type of ordinance, which would then go to the Planning Commission and then the City Council for approval. Well, let's keep going along those lines and see what else we would need to do. So, we did already talk about the imposition of fees for cost recovery. Well, what does that mean? Well, having cannabis businesses, I think, fairly universally accepted, is going to require some regulation and some regulatory scheme that city staff is going to need to enforce. And that enforcement is going to cost dollars and resources. So, ideally, what you'd want, just as developers pay the city fees for their development, you would want the cannabis businesses to pay the city for the cost of enforcing the regulations that are specifically designed for their particular business. You could also consider, should we tax those activities? And a number of cities on the peninsula have decided to do exactly that. That does require a vote of the people. That vote has to occur at an election at which City Council members are on the ballot, and the first time that can happen is not this November, but next November in 2019. At that time, you could also choose, if you wished to, to place either an advisory measure or regulatory measure on the ballot. Well, what does that mean? So, an advisory measure is you're asking the public, what do you think about this? It's not binding, but the City Council can use that for direction. It's important for those measures to be useful to the City Council, that they be well-defined. So, you'd want to tell us how you would want to define those measures at a subsequent meeting, so that we could work on them and bring them back to you. Some cities have also put what I call a regulatory measure on the ballot. In other words, instead of the City Council adopting the zoning ordinance that says, we want three retail facilities and we want them in the zoning districts, you leave that to a vote of the people. So, one issue that we've heard from our expert consultants about that is that that actually is difficult to implement and reduces the discretion that the City Council has to adapt the ordinance to changing unforeseen circumstances, because that ordinance can only be amended by another vote of the people. So, what we've heard from our consultants is that if you want to regulate cannabis, you should tell us what you want to regulate. Let us and the experts come up with a series of regulations, present those to you for review, and adopt those regulations, and then put a tax measure on the ballot. So, that would be the sequence of events, if you're interested in that. Finally, the other important thing, and it bears noting, that there's a little gap in time that you have to be concerned about. So, remember, the moratorium that you have expires on October 25th, and you can't re-up that. So, between October 25th and the November 2019 election, there is about a year's worth of time in which, if you don't do anything before the 25th, then any business can come in, get a state license, and operate in San Bruno without complying with any zoning ordinance, without paying any taxes, without paying any regulatory fees. So, I think the recommendation from staff is that if you are interested in looking at regulating, allowing some of these activities in the future, that you need to consider what you're going to do, because you can't get those online really before, too much before the 25th of October, and you certainly can't get a tax measure on the ballot before November of 2019. So, you'll need to consider, what do you do in that interim period? And one possibility is to adopt an ordinance that bans it, with the understanding or direction to staff, that then you're going to reconsider amending that ordinance in the future before the 2019 election to allow and regulate certain of those activities. And that would give staff enough time to put all those regulations together, to put ballot measures together, and however you want to do it. And so, finally, the last point is that it's important to note that all of this analysis really requires the City Council... really requires the city council to tell staff what it is that they favor in terms of marijuana cannabis businesses in the city. And what our consultants have told us is that you should look at cannabis businesses not as a regular, stable source of funds to balance city budgets, but instead, if you're going to allow cannabis in the city anyway, if the community is in favor of allowing that, then you may as well tax it once it's here, rather than looking at it in the reverse way, which is how much money can we get from a cannabis facility and let's see what we can have? Because that sort of flips the conversation and puts out front the rather uncertain source of income. If you're only allowing a couple of cannabis businesses in the city, then you're really only depending, you're depending only on those businesses to be successful, to not go bankrupt, to operate within the confines of law, it's very difficult to know what's going to happen to those businesses. So you don't want to adopt them for the purpose of generating revenue, you want to allow them in certain zoning districts so you can control where they are, and then tax those businesses once they're there in operation. That's the advice that we're getting from our consultants. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If it's okay with council, I'd like to see if we can go to the speaker cards. They've been waiting a long time in case they need to get home. Please, Melissa.
Stephen Seymour.
Good evening, mayor and city council. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all of the work that was put into the presentation that was just delivered. It does seem fairly accurate information. One thing I would like to mention is our president has said that he will stay out of the business of cannabis and leave it up to the states. So while there is some ambiguity in whether or not the federal government will prosecute or get involved in this, it's not likely. Everything that's going on right now in our country points towards probably rescheduling, reclassifying THC. Most people in the industry today think that that's going to happen within the next two years, and that's the only thing that gets in the way of doing more research with THC, funding research with THC, and it's also what complicates the banking system. So we're moving towards reclassifying THC. I would like to kind of talk to you a little bit about, lead you through a little story here. About two weeks ago, I toured about 50, 60 farms up in Mendocino and Humboldt. In terms of licensing and becoming legal, there's a rush by all of those that are involved in this business right now to legalize, to get the permitting they need so that they can operate 100% legal. In terms of the banking, as was mentioned, there are already alternatives that many dispensaries today and delivery operations already take credit cards. There are companies who are, as you mentioned, allowing credit cards, and the rate that they charge is somewhere between 2.5% and 3%. So it's not, I mean, under normal circumstances, that sounds high, but for this business, it's not. I have been working with several people who are in the business, and I'll tell you one quick story. I know a delivery, a person who owns a delivery operation, they started about six months ago. By the end of the year, they're on pace to have slightly over $8 million in revenue. That $8 million is really the reason why I think this city should think about having cannabis within the city boundaries. That $8 million could be $500,000 in tax revenue. And we just spoke tonight about budget, about the budget, and the need to have other revenue sources. I think this is a great revenue source. I realize I'm over and I'm not going to take those three minutes you just gave me, I'm almost done. You didn't talk about the Colorado issue. I brought flyers for everyone. There are lots of, there's lots of data about Colorado and what it's done and hasn't done, and a lot of what is out there is not accurate. I have, right here, it shows, this contradicts some of what's out there, this shows that there's actually a decrease in marijuana use by 12 and 17-year-olds in Colorado since it was legalized. So there's a lot of data out there that I think's flawed, and I'm almost done. You could go to Hafnun Bay, who already is going to put four amendments on there, I'm not sure how you referred to them, but they're not legal, but they're amendments to see what the public would like from the cannabis industry if you were to adopt bringing it into San Bruno. They already exist, you might go to Hafnun Bay and check out what they're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Larena.
Barbara Larea, Clark Avenue. The FDA just recently approved the first marijuana-derived prescription medication available in the U.S. for seizures. However, it does not contain THC. THC is a hallucinogen. It is mind-altering, according to the federal government. The marijuana we're discussing to legalize in San Bruno has THC in it. It is not going to be taken out. This leads me to the argument I hear so often. People tell me, we have so many liquor stores in San Bruno, we need marijuana dispensaries. Liquor and marijuana are not the same. Liquor is totally regulated with the amount of alcohol in each bottle by the state government. It is not a hallucinogen. It does not, it is not considered by the FDA or doctors to stimulate the mind in a negative or hallucinogenic way. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, THC is mind-altering, it's a chemical, and it does have hallucinogenic effects. Cannabis is still illegal under federal law. Because of this, commercial marijuana businesses so far have all had to do business in cash because banks are prohibited by the federal government from dealing with this business. Regarding property values, Colorado homes, Colorado has passed the recreational marijuana. Homes within one-half of mile of marijuana dispensaries have gotten lower property values compared to other homes in the city. There's also attorney, Mark just talked about the different cities, but what we are not talking about is there are four or five cities so far in San Mateo County that are adopting an absolute ban on everything but what is allowed by state law. That is the one that Attorney Zaffarano wrote that you have there. That is a temporary ordinance that we want to make permanent. I read it, it is, to me, lawsuit-proof. No one could challenge this ordinance that he wrote last year that's going to expire in October. It covers everything. So there is a part about outdoor grows also. People are talking to me that they want to do outdoor grows. Kids come by my house every day from the school, people have, I've seen vegetables on their front lawn. Imagine if people grown marijuana? Outdoor grow should be banned. The way Attorney Mark Zaffarano has written the ordinance that you have, which is temporary until the next couple of months, it is the most protective of the citizens of this city. Now, yes, I have the research from Colorado. It says that marijuana-related crimes increased 42%, DUIs were up 41%. Remember, there's no test when someone is stopped to check to see if there's marijuana in their system, okay? Marijuana ingestion by children went up 138%, and there was a 400% increase in toddlers ingesting edibles. Marijuana hospitalizations increased 82%. It goes on and on and on. This is a doctor from Mills Peninsula Hospital.
Barbara, if you can start to wind up.
Okay. The doctor from Mills Peninsula Hospital has said about all the problems and that this THC that is in the marijuana, which is what you're talking about, is a hallucinogen, and he named all, it's in the magazine that Mills Peninsula just put up. So I recommend the city council make the current ordinance permanent for the health and safety of the city and not think of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next, please.
Sandra Perez Vargas.
Hello, I'm obviously completely for a dispensary in San Bruno, and the percentages that are thrown out there, like crime has increased 100%, but what are the numbers? Was there one arrest before and two arrests after a dispensary opened? Numbers are very deceiving, and I could speak for myself that when I go to San Francisco, I have never been to a dispensary where there are any issues. They're well-run, so we can learn from San Francisco or any other place, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. The medicinal benefits from cannabis are absolutely amazing. I use it every single day for all the issues that I have medically, and even if it wasn't for that, even if it was just recreational, what's so wrong with it? What's so wrong with a plant being sold in our city? We use mint tea when we have a stomach ache, we use aloe vera to apply to our skin when we have a rash, and it's been around as long as man has, and we've used it in many, many different countries, and anything can be abused. Alcohol is abused, and that seems to be so accepted. There's so many car accidents, so you really can't compare cannabis with alcohol. Alcohol has no medicinal benefits whatsoever, cannabis does. I give it to my cats when they're ill, it takes care of seizures, it takes care of so many things, so I'm completely behind it. And with San Bruno, when you talk about San Bruno, what do we know about San Bruno? People don't know very much. Why can't we be like this gateway? When you arrive at the San Francisco airport, you go to Rolling Pin Donuts, and if you want, you go to an amazing dispensary. I mean, why not? What's so wrong with that? I would love to see that. When I go anywhere, when I travel, if I'm in Colorado, if I'm in Oregon, off the plane, my first stop is a local dispensary. And it's what I need, it's my medicine. And, I mean, what else can I possibly say? Right now, I was sent a message from a friend, Jim Nickerson, that you might know, a San Bruno resident. He is in hospital, he's dying, and what has helped him, more than anything else, medicinal cannabis. And yeah, there's THC. He needed his reality altered from all the pain and the depression. So yeah, bring the THC on. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Dolores Williams.
I'm new to this process. Dolores Williams, Mastic Avenue, is that it?
Welcome, Dolores. Welcome, make yourself comfortable.
Okay. I just want to say thank you very much for that presentation. I really learned a lot. I'm here to say that, from a personal experience, I use medical marijuana whenever I need it, which is quite frequently. I'm a college instructor at City College in San Francisco. It's really interesting for me to hear that all marijuana deals with hallucination because I cannot do my lectures in pain, and medical marijuana has enabled me to continue to teach college. I'm just going to say, I couldn't even come here today if I hadn't taken a little medical marijuana because of the pain. So it's really interesting for me to hear people probably who have never taken it, who haven't had the experience, to come up. It kind of reminds me of the kinds of things that were said about marijuana days gone by, those scary things that they put on television about all these horrible things that can happen to you. Where I'm here to say, nothing horrible has happened to me as a result of taking medical marijuana. In fact, I went to Kaiser Hospital about four or five years ago. I was in so much back pain, and I was begging that they write me a prescription so that I could get medical marijuana. I was trying to do it in what I thought was the appropriate way, and they said, no, that they couldn't do it. But, they said they could offer me addicting pain pills. So I did have, I did take some, I took the prescription, I took one. Of course, it wore off after four hours. I had to take another one, and then I knew that that was going to be a problem for me. My husband took me to a clinic where I was able to get the prescription for medical marijuana, and I was able to use that instead of going down the road to addiction with pain pills. And the interesting thing about all of this was the doctor knew I was in a great deal of pain, and she called me and said, do you need more pain pills? Now, I would rather do what I am doing now, which is really, for me, a very gentle process, and which has been very healing for me, which has enabled me to continue my life in a normal fashion, where I can continue to garden, where I continue to clean my house, and do all the normal things that I want to do without being addicted to pain pills. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Next speaker, please.
Tom Hamilton.
So I read the entire report, it was very, very well-done, very comprehensive. I'm in favor of the city exploring allowing cannabis businesses in the city. The reason that the federal government is, especially Congress, is so against marijuana and cannabis, and has taken the position that they have, frankly, it's because the cannabis business doesn't have millions and millions of dollars in lobbyists flooding Congress the way that the liquor industry and the tobacco industry does. That's the only reason, and we all know that. I believe that we can put together a series of ordinances that would make sense, that we would have to be very clear in those ordinances to indemnify San Bruno in case of any kind of federal crackdown, because while our president has said he's not going to do anything, you'd never know what he might have tweeted while I'm talking. So, you know, he can change his mind at any second. So we have to be very, very careful about that, but I believe that we could do that, and so that anybody operating in the city would be doing so at their own peril from federal action and would not be able to pass that liability on to San Bruno. Everything else I had to say has already been said by our other speakers. The one, I would, I did agree with only one thing that a previous speaker said, is that we should not do this for tax revenue, we should do this because it is overwhelmingly supported by the city's residences, and I think if we put an advisory measure on this November's ballot, that would be shown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ryan Mersey.
Ryan Mersey, Keynes Avenue. I would like to say I support the regulation in sale and all of the other activities regarding cannabis in our city at as early a date as possible. I would like to say something a little different. I'd like to talk about test- I'd like to talk about testing. I have a close relative who is a medical researcher in South San Francisco, working for, well, he has his own biomedical research firm. And one of the important things that South San Francisco did was allow testing. And those research companies want to be in the nine four oh eight oh zip code. But the price is getting very expensive. Now, there may not be many appropriate areas in San Bruno, but being right next door to nine four oh eight oh zip code might have us get some vacant buildings rented out in appropriate areas if we were allowed testing. And these are major companies that need reliable, that, that would be reliable. We're talking major medical firms that are now starting to test. If they can expand right next door in a city that is attractive to them, I think we could see a financial benefit to ourselves with greater economic activity. Thank you. That could be done very quickly without the other list. The testing itself could be a separate issue. That'd be allowed quickly. Thank you.
Next, please.
Jose.
Hello. Thank you for, for the time. I'm kind of coming out of the green shadows, if you will, to speak up here right now. And I work for a dispensary in San Francisco. And this is after a long thought about going to work for a dispensary. Because I was, I went back to school at Skyline College to get into solar, and I worked for Solar City. And I said, well, there's a lot going on. And some of those businesses took a downturn while cannabis is taking upturn. So it's, it's pretty interesting and I had to make a decision. And then some people that I know here are probably going, "You're selling pot, Jose." But anyway, I, I do it for a living. It's, it's the, what I could tell you is I've got off Vicodin and I used to take Vicodin. The VA used to give me Vicodin for a very long time. And I finally got off Vicodin and started using medical marijuana. And I have to go all the way to San Francisco or somewhere to get it. And like you were saying with testing and other things, obviously people want to get quality products and it's a serious business. And there's, as you mentioned, Prop sixty-four and all the things that you've mentioned, we're all moving in that direction. So at some point, hopefully, San Bruno will get on board with it. I'm not gonna get rich doing what I do right now, working for a dispensary. But at this point, you know, other businesses, like I said, they're, it's shaky. So I would say that San Bruno would benefit from having patients or people that recreationally want to use it here locally without having to go jump in, for me, jump on public transportation or something to go and get what you need. So Walgreens, you know, might get in the business. I don't know. I mean, it's one of these things where it's obvious a serious thing and there's a lot of deadlines and dates. Testing, I know, is obviously very important because you cannot sell product that is not tested or licensed. And this is the quagmire, if you will, that's happening right now with product distribution and people trying to get licensed and people that are not licensed. So the answer is obviously everybody should get on board, whether the city's, you know, ready to do that, I have no idea. But obviously, it's a positive medicine. I got off opioids and I know a lot of people that are doing that from what I read. And again, that's just what I read. But if you talk to people, they will, might tell you the same thing. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm being told that that's all the speaker cards. Is there anybody else in the audience that did not turn in a speaker card that wanted to speak on this topic? Okay, let's turn it to the council. I'm sorry. Thank you, Barbara. Alex?
Sorry, super last minute.
You could just come and, come and talk, Alex. But thank you.
Alex Melendez, one forty Portola Way, San Bruno. I am here as a private citizen, not representing any group or individual other than myself. I am in favor of the cannabis industry in San Bruno. I too have had family members who have been able to come off of addicting medications through the use of medical cannabis, although I support it both medically and recreationally. I am more in favor of a majority opinion either way from our San Bruno voters. I'm more here to discuss possible locations if the city so chooses to move forward on this issue. I think a good primary location could be near the industrial areas, near Montgomery and the northern parts of San Mateo Avenue. This would be away from most schools and our main commercial centers while also significant, while also significantly close to our police station. Alternatively, Sneeefland could be a location between San Bruno and two eighty near the VA. However, these locations would all be dependent on the availability, availability of space and possibly rezoning. Everything else has pretty much been, been said. I'd like to thank the esteemed city council and staff for their time, especially Mark Zaffarano for his very comprehensive report and yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. So there are no more speakers or speaker cards, so we'll bring it back to council. And council, any comments? This is, again, not an action item, but a direction to staff on the, as we've been told, a comprehensive report that Mr. Zaffarano has given us. Irene?
If possible, I'd like to hear from our police chief on his thoughts about all this.
Sure. Did you turn in a speaker's card? Chief of Police Ed Barberini.
Good evening again. As a matter of practice, as, as a police chief serving in a municipality, I, I don't usually or normally offer opinions regarding policy, but I'd, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions or concerns you may have about any direction that you're considering.
Through the chair? Part, part of the report that Mark sent to all of us and that's available to the public had to do with the crim, the increase in criminal activity in Colorado regarding dispens, in relationship to the use of recreational marijuana and near dispensaries. So I didn't know if you had heard from, anecdotally from other cities, other police chiefs, incidences that may give us some insight about all of that or, and/or if, what, if we either go all out or, you know, do, do part of some of this. One of the other comments that was also in the report was regarding staffing up, basically, to handle any incidences that might occur or to regulate, to go out and do enforcement. So I was wondering if you had any comments about that.
Sure. So we, in the law enforcement environment, we've heard the same information from, from the Colorado experience and pretty directly. And we believe it to be pretty accurate. There, from a, from a public safety perspective and from a safety-only perspective, our concerns obviously are the, the effects of how people behave when they're using marijuana or any other drug. And a big part of that is driving. And right now, we're in a kind of a difficult position where driving under the influence of marijuana is, is a big deal, unfortunately, just like driving under the influence of alcohol is. However, driving under the influence of alcohol is a little bit more clear-cut because we can measure the level of alcohol in a person's system at any given time. Marijuana, while we can articulate that there is marijuana in, in somebody's system, it's more difficult to determine what level that is or whether or not they're under the influence. As far as staffing, that's probably my biggest concern, as we've, we've just gone through a lengthy budget process and I think we've made it abundantly clear from a police department perspective that we're spread as thin as we, we can probably be at this point. There are other areas where we're tasked with doing some regulation or licensing work. That includes our card room and massage parlors. And to be frank, that, that, that takes a lot of work. And, and I would anticipate that depending on the route, that if the council chooses to, to jump into this arena, depending on the, the nature of what the city chooses to do, it's going to create some, some work on our end that probably could not be done, done or completed adequately with existing staff. So I would anticipate that there'd be some demands on the police department, along with probably two or three other city agencies at the very least, where we don't have the staff to do that now. So I would imagine that we would have to look at somehow doing something to, to, to increase that. The other, and, and this is not my area of expertise, but the other discussions that are, that are, that take place in the law enforcement environment, because we don't, like, most people would believe that we have a hard line, yea or nay. And the opinions within our, our business are, are, are pretty all over the map, as opposed to us all being in the one line. The one thing that we have difficulty is we don't have that one example where there was a windfall from, from jumping into the marijuana business where, from a public safety perspective, we could see, hey, there was, there was a tremendous amount of revenue that either offset or made our lives easier from a, from, from that perspective. So those are the types of conversations that are being had. Not, not, not an opinion, not advocating either way, just some of the considerations that are being talked about within the law enforcement circles.
Thank you.
Why the chief's up, council? Is there any other questions of the chief? No? Thank you, chief. Any comments or question from council? Laura?
I'll go first tonight. This is a tough decision. I would say that for me personally, I, I don't support the use of marijuana. I understand that there's a need for medicinal purposes and I understand that wholeheartedly. I remember going through chemo treatments and other patients in the same center who needed it to get through because of the nausea and things like that. And I feel that that's, you know, something that needs to be supported through doctors, through prescriptions, through the, the appropriate locations to support medical marijuana. I also feel that our society has an epidemic when it comes to addiction and that the use of marijuana is a gateway to other drugs. I have an unfortunate personal experience with a relative. And the first thing you'll learn about going to any class and any, is that you need to be alcohol, marijuana, drugs free in order to, to rid your, your addictions. And it's a very, very scary world. We have a close family, a close friend who lost her son this year. Marijuana, you started in high school. It's, it's becoming an epidemic with the younger kids because of depression. It's so readily available. I remember asking my son in high school, when he was a freshman, and this goes back twelve years ago, I said to him, eight years, ten years ago, I said to him, "How easily available and readily can you get it? You want it within the next half hour?" And that was then. And today, I guarantee you, I can go on to an app and have it delivered to my home. I could drive up to a location in the city and, and get it pretty quickly. So it's out there. To bring it into our city, I have a hard time with that right now. I have a hard time with that right now because it's, it's an unknown. I mean, from a city standpoint, we don't, we cannot afford additional police officers on the street. We can't afford additional crime in, in the streets. And we know that it'll come. It's just a fact. Marijuana and the drugs will bring in more people and there will potentially be additional crime caused that. And the other thing I think is really important is I will never make a decision up here that's gonna be based on taxes. I'm not here to say that, "Let's do it because it's gonna increase our taxes." I would say, "Let's do it because it's the right thing and it's the only way residents in San Bruno can get marijuana for medicinal purposes." And that's why I would support it. But I'm not gonna support it as a recreational drug. I think we have a problem with that. And I think there are too many kids who easily can get it and it continues on in life. And that, that sort of steamrolls to other issues within society. And that's my stance.
Other comments or questions from council? Marty? Sorry.
Sorry. I have a young son. He's gonna be six in August. And I compare the city I want for him and the upbringing I had, where I had to make choices in my life. And yeah, back in those days, you could still get it in an hour. You'd have to, you know, ride your bike over to somebody's house and somebody's brother had it or somebody, but... So this is a, this is a personally a difficult decision for me. The idea is, does San Bruno want to be a city that has a dispensary? Well, some people over here are saying yes and some people that written me have said no. That ultimate decision should rely, should be based on the people who vote. But tonight, we're, 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 we're trying to get down this path. And so I, I personally believe that the research is fine, to, to do those type of businesses in, in San Bruno is okay. It gets down to primarily on the dispensary. Does San Bruno, do the, do the voters of San Bruno want a dispensary? We know the voters of California wanted to legalize recreational marijuana. We know that the majority of, what was fifty-seven percent of San Bruno, sixty percent? Okay, thanks. They wanted it legal recreational, but that wasn't a vote saying, "I want it in my town." Right? It's a different question. So ultimately, that decision should be made, I think, by the public. And getting, getting to determine all the specific rules and where it'll be zoned to be, I personally don't want it in our face. I think we can find a place for it other than our downtown. I don't want it seen in our downtown. I think we, we, we don't need that. You know, we already got enough stuff down there. So I would, I would like to see staff pursue investigating it more. I, it was, this is something that we should be looking at having, having another meeting. This was a small sample of our community. You know, there's... So the one question I have for, for our city attorney, or I guess it could have been, well, we'll let him give it a shot first, but the idea of banning indoor, or I'm sorry, outdoor, if you ban it, then you do not get any of the funding, it says in the report. And that doesn't seem like a good idea to me, to, to try to regulate what people are doing inside their houses. It's inside their house, you know? It's your castle. I don't want anybody, any city people going in there, "Hey, you got seven plants," or "You got six," or "You got five," whatever. I, I don't, I prefer that people don't grow it outside, but that's what, where how plants grow. They, they want to, they want to grow in the sun. So I, I'm not in favor of banning that. I'm not, I'm not in favor of regulating that. I think, I think that's something that we can talk about and I could get some more input on. So I think I've talked enough. I think I would like to see, we got two more council members, or actually, I'm not sure, yeah, four more that I haven't heard their comments yet. So I'm looking forward to those.
I think the vice mayor was, was clear, but Michael, you were next.
Well, I, I agree with both of my colleagues that have spoken. I really, really liked what you said, Vice Mayor Davis. I, I think we do have a problem. And as a parent, I, I do worry about kids and the kind of message that we're sending them. I mean, grownups, adults can make adult decisions about what they put in their bodies and they're very well capable of handling that. But, you know, anyone under twenty years of age, they, you know, their, their brains are less developed and they're more prone to addiction. And I think putting a, a message out there that we, as a city, think that it's okay, we have the same problem with, with alcohol and with cigarettes and all these other things. We're trying to keep them out of the kids'. We're trying to keep them out of the kids' hands. It's, it's difficult, and, um, you know, I try to set a good example for my kids, but, you know, there, there's a lot of peer pressure, there's a lot of influence, and, um, you know, and, you know, quite frankly, the, uh, the, the drugs that are supposedly legal are causing big issues as well, and I wish we could do something about that, but that's definitely out of our hands. Um, you know, as, as Marty said, you know, he's, he's got a, a young boy at home, and he's gonna grow up in this city, and he's concerned about what kind of environment is, is there for him, so, um, you know, at this point, I, I really don't see us wanting to be at the forefront of this. Um, something that the city attorney said is that, you know, if, if we keep this action with the council, and, and I, I really think that we do need to keep the action with the council and not try to push it off on the voters to make a decision, because, um, attitudes are gonna change, we're gonna have more data as we move forward. Um, I, I think at this point, um, we probably don't wanna take the step of, um, you know, accepting the, the responsibility and authorizing any kind of, of activity, but I don't wanna say that, you know, that might not be the case in a couple of years. Um, you know, the rest of the country is, uh, is changing attitudes, um, the federal government may at some point change their mind, and, um, you know, a- at that time, then we can revisit it. We, we've got our neighboring communities that are, that are, some of them are stepping in, some of them are step, staying out of it, so, um, I would definitely like to see what their experience is, uh, a few years down the road. You know, the county's only recently taken action, so, um, I would like to see what their experience is gonna be with the, with the cultivation here in San Mateo County. That's definitely new for us, and so, um, a lot of data to still be, to, to still be gathered. Um, and, you know, if, if we do ever get to the point where we do want to try to regulate it, um, then, you know, a large portion of that, that regulation effort really needs to be about keeping it out of the hands of, of minors. Um, I know even when only medical marijuana was, was being allowed, uh, it really wasn't hard to get a card that would allow you to go in and buy it, and, um, I think you only had to be 18 to go in there and, and get it, and I just don't think it was being regulated properly. So, um, if I'm hearing from staff that it's gonna, you know, take a lot of effort to get us to a place where we can do a good job of regulating it, then, um, I'm hesitant to step into that arena.
Thank you. Irene, any other comments or...
It's a, it is difficult to, to figure all this out. On the one hand, it's readily available. Um, I have three kids that could, well, I'm not so much anymore the older, but when they were in high school, could've told you, oh, sure, so-and-so, and so-and-so, and down the street, and whatever. So in one essence, we're trying to keep it away from kids who know more about it than we do, and on the other hand, we're trying to figure out who should be able to do what. Um, I, I've been, I was looking at this chart and trying to figure out what it, what could we do that would help people who need, who need it for pain, um, or for every, the other different, uh, medical conditions they have, without putting it out there, without making it so available. So Mark, one of these things that's here says, "Medical delivery only." So am I, am I correct in assuming that that means a person can have it delivered to their home for, if they have a medical reason to do that? Is that what that means in practical terms?
Yes, partially. So that, that's a good question. So normally, uh, delivery would be delivery of any cannabis products. I don't know how you could regulate, um, whether the delivery to any particular person is a delivery for, for a medical reason, uh, because you're, you're obviously not going to have anybody going with the delivery person to check their, their medical ID card. So I, I guess I would say that from a regulatory standpoint, delivery is delivery, and I, I don't know of any cities that have tried to make that distinction. Um, I do know that cities that have tried to tax deliveries, uh, have had a difficult time implementing a system that, that does that, because it's, it's very difficult, um, to, to do that, and there is a bill right now in the state legislature that would allow non-licenses, that is, people who are not licensed by the state, to deliver, and so that would mean anybody can deliver the, the product to, to anyone. Uh, so that, those are the difficulties with, with the delivery model, although some cities, as you've seen, do allow delivery, um, and, and I guess they're trying to tax it.
Yeah, I was, the, the, some of them allow medical delivery, and some, like Portola Valley allows medical medicinal delivery, but not recreational delivery. But how do you regulate delivery anyway? I mean, it, it's just, you can go online and, and order some with your credit card and get it in two days, and how do we as a city regulate that?
Yeah, that, that would be, I guess I would say, that would be a difficult task. Um, I think we, we know how difficult it is to regulate Lyft, to regulate Uber, to regulate Limebike, uh, to regulate people that, that leave things around, to regulate part, Way, Way.com, uh, when these are on, online platforms. I, I think it would be a, a challenge, uh, to regulate the delivery of a product to an individual's home.
So, so basically, us saying, "No deliveries allowed," isn't gonna affect anyone's, and especially if anyone needs it for medicinal purposes. So, so what I, what I'm getting at is, we're not denying anyone who is in pain, medical marijuana to relieve that pain, because they can, I mean, we're, they can get it anyway.
Well, right, I, I guess the important thing to note is that neither the moratoriums that the city has passed, nor any of the other prohibitions prohibit people from either obtaining or, or using marijuana for, for any purpose. What those do is it, it prohibits facilities, commercial facilities, from being established in the city. So those individuals, uh, then i- if they wanna get marijuana products, then need to go somewhere else in order to get those products, or, as you said, have it delivered to their home with, without the city being able to either know or regulate that.
Okay, so then, uh, then also about the indoor plant, um, cultivation and planting. Again, anybody can grow, legally grow up to six plants, p- a- and nobody's, uh, so, part of, part of my kind of fumbling around with this is, I don't wanna advocate it, I don't want to put it out there, I don't want to encourage it, but on the other hand, I understand people who need it, so I was searching for a way to, to satisfy both, but we're really not denying anyone access to medical marijuana or any kind of marijuana. We're only really tr- trying to deny or think about regulating or denying or prohibiting a business coming in and doing it.
That, that's correct.
So, okay, so just to be clear on that, um, since that is the case, I'm for not having it at all, for banning it, and if we are banning all the businesses related to it, um, for many reasons, so if, if, if three of us say that, that's what you all will do, or bring, bring that back, and then any future, I mean, in the future, if things change, that can also change.
So just to clarify, uh, right, if the city council were to direct staff this evening, uh, we would, to, to do that, to, to come up with an, an ordinance that's similar to our moratorium, uh, to ban commercial marijuana facilities in the city of San Bruno, we would come back with that ordinance at a subsequent meeting, and for introduction, that would be, uh, obviously an open public meeting, and then it would be for adoption, and it would go into effect thirty, within 30 days of, of adoption.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so my two cents, um, and I will say, I agree with the, my colleagues on a variety of what they've said. Um, concerns is that, uh, some action, if it was going to be regulated or allowed, whatever it was, has to be done by September 25th, prior to the October 25th expiration. If we take no action, and October 25th comes on October 26th, then somebody can go down to City Hall, can apply, and, um, go through the process, because it is allowed within the state. What happens if that happens, and then all of a sudden, come February, March of the next year, everybody comes down and says, "That was a bad idea. Can we just pull the plug?" And then everything goes away and goes back to normal, or is the, I'm gonna say the answer's no, but am I...
So, uh, under state zoning law, uh, once you allow a use in a particular zoning district, because you didn't either prohibit or regulate it, then that use becomes what's called a, a pre-existing use, and so if you were to decide later, after the use is established, that you wanna change the use and prohibit it, you wouldn't be able to do that for a pre-existing, uh, use that is become what they, they say is non-conforming. So, and there are many examples of that in the city. For example, um, you might have a, a certain kind of business somewhere, the city rezones, and so now that business is no longer allowed, you can't kick the business out. They, they get to stay there as long as they're operating, and the city has certain rules about, about that, if they discontinue for six months, and so on and so forth, uh, then, then we can say that you can't operate the business anymore. But for the most part, uh, the, the individual would have a right to conduct, continue conducting that business, even if, uh, the public or the city council changed their minds and decided that to, to prohibit those kinds of businesses. You could prohibit future ones, but you couldn't stop the ones that are already there.
Okay, and also, uh, as we can, as others have, the, you can ban it and then reopen it. So to me, what I see in the short term is that, uh, we need to have an ordinance come back that bans it, so I cannot believe that we're going to have enough time for everybody to get together on what should be established and how it should be done on September 25th. I'm gonna have an agenda item that talks about having one meeting in August, so I just don't see how feasibly that's gonna get done. Um, so obviously, I think city, the city of San Bruno wants to maintain control, so I would think that's the first thing that needs to be done. Um, I believe that, um, one thing as far as the testing aspect, that is something that I would want to maybe look at, uh, and maybe even be, maybe open to that. Um, as far as storefronts and other things, I think that needs to be banned at this time. It can certainly be, uh, brought back again. You can undo that quickly, but if we go past the October 25th deadline, then you can't, uh, once that process starts, and we found that with the in-law units, right? That started happening, the applications came in, and we said that was too big, we wanted it smaller, but you can't stop it once it started. Um, and I, and I agree with the vice mayor, um, as long as, I've lived here my whole life, and what I believe and what I say and what I do is not gonna ever be about money. That's not what the city is about, that's not what I'm about, and that's not how I was raised. Uh, it's about what's best for the entire community, all of it, and so, uh, I'm not gonna be rushed into judgment by September 25th to set some policy and structure in place to meet that deadline, so, uh, I think that's what needs to come back, is a ordinance for the banning, so we can continue it, not go past the October 25th deadline, understanding that we can look into other aspects. Irene brought up about deliveries, but we understood that was a little, uh, it's complicated. Um, we heard about testing, and I don't know that I had heard others, but other than opening up another dialogue or, uh, suggestion. It's also about the taxes. The great value that I keep hearing when I, you know, we talk about that is, you can't do anything until 2019 in November. So, eh, there's all the, that you should do it only because of the money, well, that's not gonna be viable until it can get on the ballot, to the vote of the people because of Prop 218. So that's my two cents. So, um, staff needs direction from counsel. Um, what, what am I, I, I'm somewhat hearing to bring back, now, correct me, please, counsel, I know you will, um, that, uh, to bring back an ordinance that continues on a banned basis, um, so that we don't go past the October 25th deadline? Is that correct, or am I wrong?
That's correct. I would agree with that.
Michael?
Yes.
Marty?
That is, what's the question?
Sorry, I know it's late. Um, an ordinance come back to ban it permanently, so we don't go past the October 25th deadline, because we can certainly reverse it after said point, but once it's, once we expire, we expire.
And we're banning also the, the testing? Everything?
Everything's banned at this time, but, uh, my suggestion was just getting more information on the testing aspect.
Okay, and do you have a schedule of, about the time estimate of how long that would take to bring something back?
On, on the banning, or on the testing?
I'm sorry, on, um, for the testing?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. Uh, we'll need to do some research. We didn't specifically look at all of the different, different license types. It was an interesting comment that, um, Mr. Mersany made about, about that, and others made. We'll need to look into that, and, and we'll let you know. Um, it will, uh, likely not be before October.
Right.
We will bring back, is what I'm hearing, the, the permanent ordinance back before, uh, October to do that, and we'll likely come back following with, with additional information if the council desires.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of banning it entirely. I mean, at some point, I totally understand your point, we get to, how can we really regulate it without knowing everything still? But, um, when are we gonna start doing, I guess we're gonna wait until other cities kinda figure it out for us? Kinda, I guess that's, that's being drawn out, like, so, um...
Unless there's something else that you're asking staff, other than testing, I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, when we're, and we're, we're gonna ban outdoor, and if we ban outdoor, then we can't get any of the funding for...
So, so, so I think that the state law is that if you impose a ban, whether it's on outdoor cultivation or otherwise, you're not eligible for grant funding that the state believes they are going to make, but that cities are not guaranteed to receive.
Ah.
So that's, that's how that works, and I, there's a lot of information about that, but there, I think the bottom line is there are no guarantees of any grant funding, and then even if there were grant funding, it goes to specific purposes, and we haven't evaluated what, what those would be, and whether the city would need them, and we, we just don't know anything about that, or whether we would even be eligible for those things. But if you do impose a ban, the, the state says you don't get any grant funding or the opportunity for grant funding.
Good chair? Yes?
Regarding that specifically, that is something I think we should look at a little closer, um, as, as some future step, because, uh, if, if there is a potential to have access to some funds, that could help us with bigger issues related to addiction and, uh, prevention and, and all these other things that, that I would like us to address, um, then maybe I would wanna have some discussion around that, and then what are, what are the other cities doing, and, um, and by then, we might have a better idea of what the potential grant schemes could look like.
We'll definitely look into that, as well as the testing issue, and really, as soon as we can get some information, I just don't know how, how long that'll be, but we'll bring it back to you as soon as we have something.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, so I'm, I'm not, unless I'm stopped, I'm hearing consensus, or unless I'm not testing, potential of the outdoor with grant, as far as looking into that, as far as the rest, to bring back an ordinance to ban.
And to be clear...
Yes, please.
The, the ordinance that would come back would replicate exactly the, the moratorium that we have right now, so all the...
Correct, that's right.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay. Okay, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 9D, receive report and direct staff to cancel the August 14th, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Tony?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city council has maintained a practice over the last many years to cancel a meeting in August, uh, given, uh, summer schedules and, uh, the op, the opportunity by doing it in advance, both to notify the public as well as to allow staff to plan ahead regarding the agenda management schedule. Uh, this year, uh, consistent with the last several years, staff is proposing that the August, the first meeting in August, I believe it's August 14th meeting, be canceled, um, uh, as, as the council has done historically. Should that be your action tonight, we would use our regular advertising opportunities to make sure that the public is aware, and we would, uh, manage the agenda calendar accordingly.
Any problem with that?
Yeah, I, um...
Oh, I didn't say problem, but any questions on that? I apologize, shouldn't say it that way.
It's a practice, but it, I think we're in a pretty unique situation. It's getting a new city manager starting and then we're going to cancel a meeting without getting their input. We have a lot of work to do. So I, I, I'm okay with going to a meeting. I mean, that, that's, that's what I'm here for. Why do we need to cancel it again?
It's been tradition as long as you've been on, as long as I've been on.
Right.
That, and it's, was once at the second time in August and then that was up because of kids' schedule and how that changed so that people could have time with their families during those summer months. It is never anything that says a special meeting of the city council can't be called by the mayor or by a majority of the council in the absence of the mayor or by staff asking for it.
To the chair.
Laura?
I, it's probably actually excellent timing. I mean, there is, you know, summer months are difficult. It takes a lot of staff time to prepare reports. I think, you know, this is something that, I know coming from a, a business that when something gets skipped like this, it's actually a relief because there's so much work in preparation in doing these reports to a board directors, et cetera. So it's, it's, I get it and I would, I support it.
We usually do one in December as well because of Christmas.
I support it as well. It, it does give staff a little break and it give, it will give the new city manager some, a breather and some time to figure out what he does want to start his first meeting with.
Michael?
Yeah, it is an interesting time and with the new city manager coming on and that timeframe, I, I was kind of eager to, to jump into it, but maybe, second thought, it might be better to give them more ramp up time, get used to the, to the, you know, the new digs and do a little jump.
I can imagine doing something else on a Tuesday night and be in here. Yeah, so I was just questioning that, the timing of it and, all right.
Thank you. All right, council, you have a direction? There are no, let's move on to comments from council members. Breakfast, go ahead.
It's breakfast time. American Legion, this Saturday, 8:30 to 11-ish till the food runs out, but it won't run out unless you all show up. So I hope to see you there and it's a great, it's a great time, you know, so. I'll be there to cook.
Comments from council, Irene?
Thank you. I just want to remind people, and I've already had a couple of people apply, that it's Beautification, Beautification Task Force is sponsoring the Beautification Awards again this year. It'll be our 22nd year in a row, my goodness. And the application forms are on the website, they'll be available at the city clerk's office, they'll be available at the library. So if you have made improvements to the front of your house and want to get recognized, please put in a nomination for yourself or if you have a neighbor that has done something, we have three categories. Zero scaping, which is the drought tolerant landscaping, most improved, so if you've gone from, you know, whatever kind of yard to something really lovely or just somebody who's always maintained their yard in a beautiful manner, so those are our three categories. So you can nominate yourself or your neighbor or anybody else in the city. Thank you.
Michael?
I just wanted to thank the people that came out to speak tonight. We had some, I mean, first of all, they stuck it out till the very end, it was almost the last topic, but to, to stand up and speak out on such a controversial topic, it's, it's a very, I know it's a very sensitive and passionate issue for a lot of people, but I just wanted to thank the people that took the time to be here and express their opinions and let us know that, you know, that there is some support out there. I know that the decision didn't go probably the way you had hoped, but I, I hope that you all stay engaged and help us work through this as we work out some of the details going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I do have something I want to read. So this is from myself, but it deals with my colleagues as well. "I and the rest of the city council have recently been asked to endorse a petition that we haven't seen. Based on comments we received, endorsing that petition would effectively require us to prejudge applicants for development before we even receive them. It would require us to commit to hiring more employees just to enforce parking regulations with zero tolerance, without consideration on all, of all the circumstances, instead of allowing our skilled police officers to resolve neighborhood problems. And further, it would require us to generally abandon thoughtful consideration of complex public policy issues, including seeking and listening to diverse opinions in favor of a quick response to the interests of few, of a few. This request to endorse a petition has come with a suggestion, some personally have told me it was a threat, but I'm not, I don't believe that, that if we do not respond as asked, city council members will be accused of disregarding the law and not enforcing parking regulations. It is being said that the vast majority of the people who live adjacent to transit corridor would agree. I am proud, as I believe my council colleagues are also, to have been elected by voters throughout this community to represent each and every citizen of San Bruno's 43,000-plus residents. In 2013, the vast majority voters voted to adopt the city's transit corridor plan because they wanted to see downtown and surrounding areas revitalized. Today, we can see that positive results of that coming to fruition. Our job as elected officials is to listen to everyone, to act for the benefit of the entire community today and for the future. Our job is to keep an open mind, to be fair and not to be rushed to judgment. This is San Bruno. We respect each other, we don't blame each other, we listen to each other, we don't make up our minds before given, if everyone has been giving a fair hearing. We act fairly and we work collaboratively to reach consensus and compromise. We don't condone division and spite. I hope everyone shares this position and this vision of San Bruno now and for tomorrow. San Bruno's future means progress, hope and opportunity. And we have difficult challenges to work through as a community, both now and in the future. San Bruno's culture is one of optimism, collaboration and willingness to work hard together to solve problems. San Bruno's style does not stoke conflict or advocate a return to the past. San Bruno's future is where we all want to live, work and play. And that's what we are working toward together. Thank you. With that, we're going to go into a closed session. We have two items, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, significant exposure to litigations pursuant to government code section 54956.9, two cases, Lozano versus City of San Bruno and Preolo versus the City of San Bruno. The second item is public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957, city manager. This meeting will stand adjourned to their next regular scheduled meeting, July 10, 7 o'clock, right here. Everybody have a safe and happy 4th of July.